Yes, sir. Good morning. It is 10 o'clock. I will call this Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. And we will start with a salute to the flag. And we have our Sheriff, Sheriff Balaum, in our chambers today. And I was hoping he could lead us in the salute to the flag. Sorry to call you out, Sheriff.
That's okay. Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will now move into roll call. Madam Clerk?
Alexis Hill, Chair.
Here.
Jean Herman, Vice Chair.
Here.
Mike Clark.
President.
Mari Luz Garcia.
Here.
Clara Andreola.
President.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
Deputy DA Nathan Edwards.
Here.
And I'm Jan Gallo, Senior County Clerk, Madam U. Everquorum.
Thank you very much. We will now move into public comment. Item number three, Mr. Manager.
Item number three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk?
First up, we have Charles Albright, followed by Terry Brooks.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Charles Albright, River Advocate. I talked to you earlier about fan trips on the river. We've got two on tomorrow and the next day, the 15th and 16th. Five rafts on tomorrow. There's two spots left. Four on Thursday, one spot left. Hoping to encourage you to get out and see the river the way we do. Okay? And then past that, the fan trips are happening. I'm hoping that you can perhaps support all the efforts that Iris with One Truckee River and the folks at KTMB, Keep Truckee Metals Beautiful, continue to make our environment better for us along the river and that. And then past that, my goals, which is to see that there's safe dams, safe rivers and all that, and that the rivers are hopefully free of dams eventually because we certainly don't need them. The Tomaas own numbers say that they really don't pay for themselves and the effect that they have on the river is rather bad in that they dewater large, long sections of river. And they also affect the wildlife in that area and fisheries and habitat along the river. So I'm hoping that we can work with each other to that. And then it's going to be a big issue here pretty soon for you folks because there's some other key players coming in to help with this. And then you, as a county, every one of these dams that's in the county is associated essentially with you except for the Ambrose Dam. And it's something we want to see gone, but nothing's been done yet. And I have a meeting with Kate Doudy real soon, and I'm also working on some other issues. But the bottom line is, we really need to do something about the dams. It's 2024, it's not 1884, okay? And we need to do something to make the river safer and to make it free flowing so it's a healthier river and that the water we're delivering to downstream people, including us, is cleaner and better. And especially what the Indian tribe gets out at Pyramid Lake, they're big about getting clean water. And it would help them immensely to have those dams removed. So that's it, pretty much. As for options that Toma has, since it's their dams, they've got a lot of land and they could put a lot of solar and a lot of also wind power generation on their properties there like Fourth and McCarran and elsewhere that they have property and use that money that they raised from all of that to pay for their bills, which is what they said the dams do now. And they're not doing a great job of it. So that's about it. Thank you very much. Look at the numbers, please, and let them know what you think because it's an expense you don't need to be paying. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care. Bye, Mike.
Terry Brooks, followed by Jonathan Bulwer.
Ma'am?
Ma'am?
Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks, again. And today I'd like to address trying to adapt to poor mental health in the case of homelessness. It's hard to adapt to homelessness and to adapt to hunger, too. It's difficult to adapt to poor physical health, and adapting to poor mental health is even harder to do. If you're mentally healthy, you can learn to adapt to change. But if you're not mentally healthy, it's hard to adapt to change. When your mental health declines, it's hard to think with reason. And your perceptions of your surroundings change like season after season. When you have difficulty reasoning, your perceptions aren't as practical. So when you try to make choices, your strategy is not as tactical. When you were mentally healthy, what you considered as common sense, now with mental stresses, you see as only nonsense. You wind up feeling like you're in a state of confusion, which then can lead to a state of mere delusion. And when you behave in a state of delusion and other people notice it, then you might experience exclusion. So when it comes to mental illness, can you adapt to it? Unfortunately, the answer is you probably cannot do it. So to any options, if you act with resistance, the best way to deal with it is to accept some assistance. You may be in a state where you can't recover alone. And if you are, you need someone to act as sort of a chaperone. So I would like to thank the Reno ambassadors for all that they do. They are there to assist such people in advising them what to do. I would like to thank everyone who helps the mentally ill. It takes a lot of care and courage to do the roles that they fill. And I'd like to thank you all for listening to me today and for trying to adapt to me and all the weird things that I say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks, our resident poet laureate.
Jonathan Bulwer, followed by Jerry Misfud.
Good morning, Chair Hill, County Commissioners. My name is Jonathan Bulwer. In my daytime job, I am the Vice President of Nevada Operations for Jacobs Entertainment. But today I'm here to speak to you about the Downtown Reno Partnership and give you some updates on what we're up to. I've had the pleasure of being on the board since 2018, since its creation. And I got to tell you, it's been a terrific experience. I've had the opportunity to meet, first meet Naomi Jordan, our current Executive Director, when she was on the Reno City Council. And her and her team have done an absolutely fantastic job, especially in two areas. One, awareness. I think the Downtown Reno Partnership, the awareness of the work that we do, and especially of the ambassadors, has never been higher. And especially the engagement, the engagement of our business owners, of our residents, of our visitors, but especially of our vulnerable population, has never been higher. And it's always been the focus of the Downtown Reno Partnership on a clean and safe downtown. But this year, for the upcoming fiscal year, we'll be elevating our focus of our mission of safe and clean by adding eight licensed security ambassadors to the 20 that we already have. We're purchasing an additional pressure washing piece of equipment that'll be able to clean and reach our areas. I have the opportunity to chair the maintenance committee on the Downtown Reno Partnership. And we work closely with the maintenance and operations team of the city in Reno. And they just do a really, really, really terrific jobs when we drive downtown Reno and you see where the sidewalks are clean and it's safe and people are commenting how clean the area is. And that's the work of a lot of hard people. We have a chance to really work closely with the city of Reno. Last month, in April, our ambassadors picked up 21,000 pounds of trash with large bulky items such as couches, pallets. They're making four or five dump runs today. Additionally, in April, our ambassadors gave 106 rides to services like the DMV Social Security Office, as well as 43 rides to shelter, returned 160 shopping carts to owners, and completed 184 pressure washes. Being a part of Jacobs Entertainment, being on Fourth Street, I've had a chance to witness our ambassadors and the connection that they can make with the people that are, with our vulnerable population. I've seen the love and care that they've given and being able to earn their trust so that they can give them the help that they need. It's really a beautiful thing to see. And finally, entertainment. Coming back again, if you like to roller skate, the Roland Reno Roller Skating Event on June 4th. So all of you that would like to roller skate, please come down to the Locomotion Plaza. And then finally, for J Resort at Globe Plaza, we have a nice lineup of entertainment, starting off on May 24th with Bone Thugs and Harmony. And we have nine concerts. If you go to jresortrenal.com, check it out. Love to see you down there at the Globe Plaza. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Misfud, you're next. Followed by Louis Fain.
Good job, young man. How you doing, folks? Alexis Hill, you're the greatest. Mr. Clark, you got a, your daughter's going to be the next mayor of Reno, not this time around, because it's important to support Eddie Lawton. He gave me a cup of coffee for that. So what you see here is an event that I threw in 2019 that Alexis actually helped me do. She was with the events people or something. This event was interrupted, disrupted, and ambushed by one person. I was sent to Donna Clontz, who was in charge of the Senior Citizens Committee for the city. I was sent to her to get $2,000 from her committee for this event, to promote this event. I needed that money badly. The mistake she made is, she met with me privately and guaranteed me $2,000. That's called breaking the open meeting law. When word got around, Donna, now at the meeting, she refused to give me the money that she promised me privately. That sunk my event. She further went around, she came to the commissioners and bad mouthed me and the event. The commissioner didn't support me except for Kitty Jung. She then went to the Sparks Senior Citizen First Meeting, which I attended, I was their first speaker, and she bad mouthed me to Sparks. And I couldn't get people to attend. This event was meant for 200 people. I had tables, I had tables for senior citizens to be informed and guided. I had three bands. I had it all together. 20 people showed up, and that's because of Donna Clontz. And she is on one of your committees, the same committee. And she does a lot of good things, okay? Let me say that straight up. But she made a grievous mistake here that cost me that party for my fellow seniors. The first seniors block and roll party. I was proud of that. It took hours and hours of work for me to put that together. I just want to say, thank you for your service. I'm nearly 80 years old, and I'm not done. Matter of fact, the slogan for seniors is, "We're still here and we're not done yet." God bless you all. God bless America.
Louis Fain, followed by Elise Weatherly.
Thank you. Good morning.
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to pray myself in this honorable place. My name is Louis Fain. Two weeks ago, I became American citizen. It's an honor to be an American, and it is my duty to give to my new country a solution to what I believe it is the most important issue in this moment in the war. Before addressing the issue, I want to bring some quote from our founding fathers. John Adams said, "The true source of our suffering has been our timidity. We have been afraid to think. Let us dare to read, think, speak, and write." Benjamin Franklin said, "God grant that not only the love of liberty, but through our knowledge of the right of men may pervade all the nation of earth so that a philosopher may set his foot anywhere on its surface and say, 'This is my country.'" Because our success with private clients, addressing maladies like loneliness, violence, addiction, existential anguish, we decide to challenge ourselves to help many people as we can to address this humanitarian crisis. As a practical philosophical advisor, we decide with my partner Kim to open a nonprofit called School for a Beautiful Life, which aim to give the opportunity that every American, as our Constitution said, the right to pursue happiness. With Kim, we would like to speak with each one of you to explain how we can have the first county in the nation that those issues will no longer be in crisis. I would like to finish with my preferred poem that is always in my heart, from our beloved poet and philosopher, Wat Woodman. "I dream in a dream. I dream in a dream I saw a city invisible to the attack of the whole of the rest of the earth. I dreamed I was the new city of friends. Nothing was greater there than the quality of Robus' love. It led the rest. It was seen every hour in the action of the men of the city and in all their looks and words." Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Followed by George Cavros.
Good morning. I wanted to talk to you guys about music today. There's this song from way back when, "What's it All About, Alfie? Is it Just for the Moment We Live?" When I was a kid, I thought, "Mox, near. Who wants to hear that goofy song, right? Now it sticks to me like glue. What's it all about, right? How about the song that Peggy Lee sang, 'Is That All There Is?'" By the way, I'm in communication with her, and she lost her husband of decades, something I could not relate to because I was never, you know, anyway. "Is that all there is? If that's all there is, my friend, then let's just keep dancing, break out the booze and have a ball if that's all there is." Then there's this song called "The Falling Leaves." Do you guys remember that song? I sang and played that song at an establishment not too long ago, and I met a man named Leonid. It was one of Leonid's favorite songs. But we had to sing it in a different key, and he could sing it in French, and I couldn't. So "The Falling Leaves" is going to, I don't want to ruin a good song, but "The Falling Leaves" is going to be a theme song for HOAs. So we've got the falling leaves drifting by our windows. Screech, up comes the HOA nightmare, tyrants, they're the real tyrants, saying, "You've got to pick up that leaf." Well, it's not my leaf, it's my neighbor's leaf. How quickly do I have to go out there every time a leaf falls? So Tom Gordon of Imaraj Sound Lab likes the idea. Dr. Davis, who owns Imaraj Sound Lab, likes the idea. So we're going to go ahead and do that about "The Falling Leaves," HOAs. Oh, and by the way, I watched a, I listened to a news article this morning, and I thought, "The last thing I could be is a district attorney." You know what district attorneys have to do? They have to file charges based on facts and evidence. And people are going to go, "Eh, you're breaking the law." Well, you might be breaking the law. And if it weren't for the district attorneys, how would we know for sure? You know, the charges have to be brought, the trial has to be done, the evidence has to be reviewed, and then you can decide whether somebody's breaking the law or not. It's not a political thing, it's just the law, right? And then as far as dreams go, I've got this song called "Only Dreaming" coming out. You know, eventually it'll come out. I've already got a song out called "Dreaming of the Dance." So yeah, I have dreams. And guess what? God actually speaks to me through dreams. Why? Maybe it's because I don't pay enough attention when I'm awake. But I will say that He communicates, and He communicates well. And now it's my responsibility and my obligation to pay attention, okay? Yes, I have ignored God in the past, and boy, did it not pay off. So I'm going to stick with it. I'm going to keep on going. I'm going to go, "Can we leave yet? Is it time yet? Are we there yet?" And then I'll trust Him. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
George Cavros, followed by Drew Rebar. Looks like we have documents to distribute.
While the document is being distributed, I'll introduce myself. My name's George Cavros. I'm a resident of District 3. And I also, my daytime job, I work with a nonprofit conservation, clean energy organization called Western Resource Advocates. And I wanted to share something with you today of concern. I thought you all would be interested in it. It's a little bit outside of your sandbox. But it involves a proposed rate increase by NV Energy. And the reason that I bring it to your attention is not because they're asking for additional dollars, 95 million, and not because they're asking for an increase in their return on equity for their shareholders. But there's something a little unusual about this rate proposal, and that is that it's sort of significantly restructuring a residential bill for Northern Nevada families, including your constituents. Families will be paying a fixed charge now. They're going to triple the fixed charge from $16.50 on the bill to $44. And that amount will never change regardless of how much energy you use. So every month before a Northern Nevada family even flips on a light switch, they're going to owe the power company $44.40. And that's problematic because it impacts low-energy-use, low-income customers the hardest. It's well-established that lower-income customers use less energy. And by changing the structure of the bill to a higher fixed charge on the front end, that negatively impacts and disproportionately impacts low-income customers. Additionally, it sends the wrong price signal on saving energy and doing the right thing. There's a lot of people that try to do the right thing, turn lights off in their homes, make home energy efficiency improvements to reduce their energy use and save money on their bills. This disincentivizes that. In fact, it rewards energy waste. Under this new restructured proposal, it's low-income, low-energy-use customers that are going to get hit the hardest, and it's customers that use more energy, generally more affluent customers who live in larger homes and have more gadgets in their homes that actually get a break, a break on their bill. So, you know, I'd be happy to talk about this at length with you. I've only got three minutes here today, but wanted to share a blog that I posted on it and share the information with you in the hope that if the commission is inclined on having their voice heard on this issue, there certainly are opportunities for the commission to file letters in the docket and express concern over this rate proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Drew Rebar, followed by Carla Para.
Hi there. My name is Drew Rebar. I've spoken to you all before. This time, I'm a candidate for Assembly District 40. I'd like to thank you for encouraging me to run with what I view as really, really bad decisions. Did I hear it right? We spent $300 million on a homeless camp? 300 million, is that right? And now I understand that there's several council members that want to adjust the regulations and how we audit these things and restrict how we audit these things, and then we're going to bury the records for after three years so the people can't know? Where'd the $300 million go? This is why I'm running for office. Public accountability, constitutional laws, and helping the people here that pay the taxes. What do we have, 1,700 homeless people by $300 million? What do they each get? Couple hundred thousand dollars apiece for being homeless? What are we giving our seniors? Commissioner Clark, I live in his district, he goes to these senior centers and it looks like you're feeding them pig slop. So what are you doing with all of our money? So there's two of you up there that are running for reelection right now. I hope you don't win. And if I do win my election, I'm going to use every bill I get to go for government accountability. And if you make this law today, I'm going to try to do it with the legislature to make sure it doesn't take effect. Please don't do it. Please make laws and regulations that leave our government open and accountable because how did we spend $300 million? Who siphoned the money? Who got it? Why are you doing this to us? Are you enriching yourselves? I don't get it. You look at the people out here that go to work every day, that pay these taxes, these young families, they can't afford houses. From what I'm told, there's about $100,000 in soft fees to construct a new single-family house. The average house, starting house in this area now is $400,000. 25% of those fees are soft fees that the government absorbs. And then what do you guys do? Give them away to the homeless or line your own pockets or your buddy's pockets? Where's the money going? I'm going to look and find out, and I'm going to keep digging. And I'm not the only one out there. So y'all need to be accountable. Accountable public servants, not public officials. You have a nice day. Drew Rebar, Assembly District 40. Vote for me if you like what you heard and you live in my district. Thank you.
Carla Para, followed by Janet Butcher.
Good morning, Board of County Commissioners. My name is Carla Para, and I'm here on behalf of the Justin Hope Foundation to express my heartfelt gratitude for your consideration regarding Agenda Item 8E3. Your generosity and support mean the world to us and have a profound impact on the lives of individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities in District 3 and throughout Washoe County. Your support directly enables us to continue our mission of fostering inclusion, empowerment, and support for the individuals we serve. We hope to continue providing essential services and programs that promote independence, build skills, and create opportunities for meaningful engagement in the community. Our goal is to help individuals with disabilities live their best lives. The Justin Hope Foundation is dedicated to making a positive difference in the lives of those we serve, and your support is a partnership that reflects a commitment to an enchanted quality of life in Washoe County. Together, we are making strides toward a more inclusive and compassionate society where everyone has the opportunity to thrive and succeed. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts for your generous and unwavering support on behalf of the entire Justin Hope Foundation team and the individuals and families we serve. Your kindness and compassion are making a real difference, and we are honored to have you as a champion for our cause. And a special thank you to County Commissioner Mari Luz Garcia for always thinking of the smaller nonprofits working tirelessly to change lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Butcher, followed by Scott Finley.
Janet Butcher, for the record, please enter my comments into the minutes verbatim, which I know you always do a good job to the clerk's office, unlike the library board. They do not do a very good job of entering the comments correctly. Yesterday, I came to the Community Homeless Advisory Board meeting, which hadn't been held for eight months. I don't know who calls these meetings, but I don't understand why they aren't more often. But I heard them talk a lot about evictions having to do with monetary and people not paying their rent. But something that wasn't brought up was that if a tenant makes a complaint about habitability, they can be subject to bogus lease violations resulting in convictions. And it is happening. So that has to do with the homeless part. I wanted then to talk about the elections. We've been waiting for months, years, for something to be done about our elections. We know they aren't right. We know there are problems. We know there are issues. We've spoke in front of this board many times. We've asked for certain things to happen. Instead, we end up getting groups of people that are funded by Soros and Zuckerberg. Instead, we end up getting groups of people that are funded by Soros and Zuckerberg to oversee our elections. And unfortunately, we say, "To heck with the citizens. You don't count. Your word doesn't mean anything. Your observations don't mean anything. We don't care what you have to say." We have three Commissioners on this board that will not support election integrity. And this, we're coming up on the next couple of weeks, two weeks of early voting, and then Election Day. How can other counties similar size throughout the U.S. run an election the same day and one day only and able to get fair elections? They don't have complaints about their elections. But we can't seem to, in Washoe County. So, is it true that Washoe is the most corrupt county in the nation? I hear that. Thank you.
Scott Finley, followed by Kelly Stevens. I will distribute his document when he starts speaking.
Please enter my comment in these documents into the record pursuant to NRS 241. My name is Scott Finley. I am a resident of Washoe County and have a military background in the United States Air Force. The Board of County Commissioners must get with the President of TMCC and UNR to solve this profound social problem. On May 10th, I graduated with an Associate's of Paralegal Law and an Associate's of Communication Studies. As you can see from the picture, over 400 graduates attended TMCC's graduation ceremony at the Lawler Events Center. By the end of the three-hour-long ceremony, less than half of attending graduates were made. What occurred at the graduation ceremony is that a graduate would go onto the stage to be recognized, go to their seat, and then within a couple of minutes, get up and leave. It gave the appearance that they were going to the restroom, when in reality, they were only there for a photo op with the intent to bail from the beginning. Numerous TMCC faculty and staff were shocked, commenting that they had never seen a phenomenon like this before. To make matters worse, we had four indignataries at the graduation ceremony, which one of them was the President of NIC International College of Japan, Kazuko Hiroda. I can only imagine what was running through her mind. There were also over 20 graduating high schoolers that witnessed this, possibly putting it into their heads that this behavior might be socially acceptable. It is without a doubt disrespectful to the TMCC faculty and staff that spent their time and energy organizing this event, and absolutely rude to fellow graduates. I do not know what the social phenomenon is, but what I do know is that this is bad. If we were to look for a canary in the coalmine type of event in order to indirectly gauge social stability, this is that canary. One of the things that makes this issue so mind-blowing is that it obviously did not happen overnight. It took years in the making, and we are now seeing the cascading effects of whatever person or thing that caused this. Even if we could snap our fingers and instantly fix this problem today, it would take years to see positive results. The appropriate corrective action is to have a do-over and hold another graduation at the Lawler Events Center. Attendance would be mandatory for every graduate that bailed early. If they do not attend and stay for the full duration of the ceremony, they do not graduate, period. Graduates that stayed until the end should be invited to attend the ceremony in order to support their fellow classmates. For these reasons, the Board of County Commissioners must get with the President of TMCC and UNR to solve this profound social problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Stevens, followed by Nicholas St. John.
Good morning. Kelly Stevens, Washoe County resident. Hi. I was at the meeting yesterday, and I just wanted to let you all know how alarming it was to watch you all hire a company called CSH, which is funded by Ford Foundation and ESG Initiatives and Soros, to come in and tell everybody that taxpayers are on the hook for possibly another bond for approximately $300 million to fund a CARES campus, where your staff, and your office knows it, will not provide the disposition of every single penny that's been spent for this CARES campus. It's egregious. And what you guys are doing is not unique. Google when you get home so that you can prepare your children for when you do a perp walk in an orange jumpsuit. Google how many council members, how many city managers, and how many county attorneys are involved with being arrested for embezzlement of taxpayer dollars, including U.S. grant dollars. I want you to just Google it, because people are being arrested. You guys failing to provide public records as far as a disposition for where every penny went under your watch, you're hiding something. Why won't you do it? Your office knows it. Your ties, people in your office, Mr. Edwards.
Please speak to the Board as a whole.
I am speaking to the Board and don't interrupt me. Your office and your ties to development is noted. Everybody here is responsible and culpable for what is going on with all of the tax dollars. Your relationship with Exela, let's talk about that. You have a registrar of voters who is a plant. Why is Exela, who you guys pay approximately $1 million annually to, handling public records from Douglas County and Washoe County? Why is that? That's rhetorical, by the way. We know why. What you guys have done is not unique. You've garnered the special attention of a special investigations team who's been watching you and documenting everything for the last three years, including from the DA's office, including letters to private residences for people who are investigating y'all. So, note that. And note that it's going to be very uncomfortable for you all coming forward, because you refuse to address where every penny went. Taxpayer dollars, U.S. grants. Not acceptable.
Nicholas St. John, followed by Penny Brock.
I'll wait for you to deliver the document to the Chair.
I need it for the record.
What?
I need it for the record.
It will be on the record that they've made this.
We can start the timer.
So, we guess we're at a standoff. You need to have this document, because I'm serving you a notice of breach of contract again.
Happy to start the timer. Yep, we started it.
Everyone wonders why I call her Queen Tyrant Hill.
Nicholas St. John, for the record, a non-fictitious, non-commercial entity, a living, breathing, real man. I have been here before. You're getting a notice of breach of contract. You are all under contract with a private, commercial contract. Did you get the document? Did you get the document? I have a document here. Where'd that document go? Where'd the document go? Where?
It will be placed on the record.
No, no, it needs to go to the person I'm serving that document to. It's a notice of breach of contract for Alexis Hill. Wow, is this corrupt or what? I'm trying to serve a notice of breach of contract to one of our Commissioners, Sheriff.
Please address the Board as a whole.
As a whole. I see you as individual people. I'll address who I want to. There's nothing in the law that says I have to talk to all of you at one time. If all of you want to listen, be my guest. I'm serving you a notice of breach. This sign, which has been on the camera, which you're in charge of, has been changed over and over and over. That'll be a breach of contract for every single one of them. You will get another notice. You'll get another 10 days to remedy. According to the First Amendment, we have a right to petition our council here, or our Commissioners, for a redress of grievances. I've demanded a town hall, which you've never given me. That's a request again. Redress, by the way, Nate, you might want to instruct her what the word "redress" means. Redress, just for the record, means that you will sit down with the people who bring you a petition for grievance, and you'll walk through this until we get an actual remedy. Okay? That's what the law says. That's what the First Amendment says. That's what our Constitution in Nevada says. You are in breach of all of that. I also demand that you put on the agenda to discuss a resolution for a Second Amendment sanctuary county. I also demand that you get rid of this unconstitutional metal detector that searches us under generalized suspicion. That, by the way, Nate, is illegal as well. And we have the U.S. Supreme Court that made a ruling indicating that it has to be individualized suspicion, and everyone coming through here is not individualized. It's general, okay? So, Carla, again, we give you 24 hours to leave office, because you have no bond.
Penny Brock, followed by Cliff Nellis.
Penny Brock, for the record, voter and taxpayer. It was hard to decide what to comment on today because so much has happened in the last week. I decided to talk on the voter register office. According to NRS, she was to have submitted, April 15th, the plan for observations by we, the public. I have not seen that plan. Also, I could not find any definition for observation or observers. Therefore, I believe putting us in the fishbowl is not legal. I looked even at the Department of Justice, and they say that the observers have a right to be on the floor, to stand behind the election worker, to observe the signature verification and the date of the postmark. So, the DOJ may want to know about this. How did I find out about this? It was in the paper last week that the voter register office is going to accommodate the observers, because we were in the press conference in January, and we told the Secretary of State that we cannot appropriately observe. So then, the voter register came up with the bright idea to change the room around. That doesn't fix the problem. We have entered the election season. We are not going to be able to do what constitutionally and by NRS we are allowed to do. This is hitting the fan. This hit the Internet this morning. Robert Beatles has written this article. He is ready to file an injunction unless we, the public, are allowed to observe as we legally have the right to do. I could find no definition of election observation or election observers. I could find no rights of election observers. I went to California, and they have the rights of election observers. They allow the observers to be at the workstations observing. We're worse than California. No wonder Heritage Foundation ranks Nevada number 50 for worst elections in America. It's only getting worse and worse and worse. The NRS does not ban election observers to an election booth or an observation booth within the voter register of voter area. NRS does not ban election observers from being allowed to be sufficiently close to access and observe the vote-by-mail ID envelopes, the signatures.
Cliff Nellis, followed by Donald Fossom.
I want to talk to you today about meaningful observation. My name is Cliff Nellis. I'd like this put in the record, please. What is meaningful observation? It is not watching a bunch of sorters sorting envelopes. That's what it's been in front of the fishbowl. And I've done this before. Now, all of these candidates running for all these offices, they're investing a lot of time, and a lot of money, and a lot of effort. And if somebody in the background is deciding our elections and making it kind of seem like we are, and deceiving everybody, deceiving the public, then all of this is futility. We don't have a democracy. We have a tyranny, a tyrannical situation. And that means we're all slaves, right? So I have a suggestion here. See, there's the fishbowl. And we can put the six signature check stations right in front of the fishbowl. And then, you know, you have the computer screen? Well, the worker has the ballot on the desk. We need to put it up on a little clip thing that you can get for the computer screen, so the observers can see the signature on the ballot and the one on the screen to see if they match. And then, the adjudicator stations can also be observable. And then also, the scanning stations, I left the word "C" out of there, sorry about that, they need to be observable also, so we know that people aren't running ballots through twice like they did in Georgia, you know? Or you could have a monitor or TV in front, so they could see that, and then a camera going down and showing the people feeding the ballots. And that would be an acceptable solution, I would say. But if you can't do that, then like Penny suggested, the people should be able to just kind of walk around, as long as they don't cause trouble, and be able to observe what's going on. And if the lights go out, like they happened last election, then the whole election needs to be declared invalid. If any candidate challenges the outcome, the county will pay for an audit of that race. And if any organization challenges the outcome, on one of the questions, the same thing. And then, the hand counting of the paper ballots and the machine tape. You know it's fraud when you deceive the people and tell them that, "Hey, hey, that little tape is counted." No, it's not. It's thrown away. It's never counted. And if it's actually counted, and you find a .1, 1/10 of 1% variation, then it should mean that all of the races are recounted. And if you find more than 1% variation, then the whole thing should be declared invalid and redone.
Thank you. Donald Fossom, followed by Valerie Fianaca.
Hi. You've got a lot of drama going on here, some serious issues, and you get a lot of serious people. But I'm noticing that you're missing about 200 to 300 casting people from your past. And I'm going to suggest, and because we all observed, that you've broken their trust by not listening to them. And I am grateful that you did move comment back to the front for those of us who frickin' work and want to be able to get to our duties without having to sit here all day and into the night. My main reason for being here today is not to be a wise guy, but I'm very concerned about election observers, as a few members in the past have just been through. You're keeping us out of range, plain and simple. We're all sharpshooters around here, and if our lens is blocked, we can't do our job. We are not going to be able to hit the targets. Now, I have another thing. I haven't been here in quite a while, Andreaola, but you've been totally betraying us as a conservative, who is supposed to come in as a conservative.
Please address the Board as a whole, sir.
Okay, I'll say this to all of you.
Thank you.
Except for Mike and the dear lady, Gina Herman. So, I went by yesterday on Highway 80, just west of USA Parkway, where you have a 60-foot billboard. And I'm going to suggest that instead of honoring us, you are honoring your donors. And you've got that big sign up there, so you catch a glance of it on your day trips with your donors.
Valerie Fianaca. Mr. Fossom.
Good morning, Valerie Fianaca, for the record. I'm here to request respectfully a parallel hand count again. What are you all afraid of? I think many in our community are becoming aware of the problem. The vote is also problematic because if it passes, two of you may not retain your seats. Quite a conundrum. Do you vote for it or do you vote against it and not keep your seat? Doing the right thing requires a backbone and it's not easy. Only about 3% of Americans wanted freedom from England. They gave their money, their status, and their lives at times. I've heard people say they were old white men. Not true. They were 24 to 30-ish, mid-30s. It's time to grow a spine, no matter what the consequence is. My own husband asked me today, why do you do what you do? Because I got a spine and I'm not going to lay down. Do a parallel hand count. Don't end up like Georgia with 380,786 ballot images and people who are not allowed to access the ballots to find out why. Why there's that mistake. Nobody trusts what's happening right now. And it's becoming more and more apparent across the United States that there's a problem. If you don't have a spine, step aside and let somebody who has a spine step up to the plate.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have about nine minutes until 11 o'clock. We'll take a short break and we'll see you back at 11 while we resume the rest of the agenda. All right. It is 11 o'clock. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Board of Accounting Commissioners. And we will now move into item four, Mr. Manager.
Test. Item four, Commissioners and County Managers' Announcements, Reports, and Updates to Include Boards and Commissions' Updates, Requests for Information, or Topic for Future Agendas.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, do you have anything for us today?
I do not.
Okay. Well, then I will go to the board. I see that Vice Chair Herman, were you signing in? You'll wait? Okay. Then I'm looking for any other board members. Commissioner Andreaola.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple things. One, I certainly want to extend a deep appreciation for all the hard work on the two in-person meetings and the online informational overview meeting pertaining to the review of the codes that are currently in place governing equine businesses. Again, I'd like to extend Kelly Mullen and the staff and the representatives from Logan Simpson who were at all of the meetings. I do want to also thank Assemblywoman Hanson for attending and participating along with the Deputy or the Department of Agriculture Director, J.J. Gocicchia. I've had meetings extensively on this and really been involved a lot. And one of the things that came out, there's a lot that came out that is really helpful, but one of the things that came out was that the codes really haven't been reviewed since the '90s, which is clearly quite some time that needs the attention. There are a lot of folks who are really impacted by this. There are folks that, I always share with people, that if you really want to find somebody with little discretionary income, find somebody owns a horse or livestock. The reality is that it's much more than the codes. The financial impact on really some of the folks and what they're required to do, I think, is excessive. And I know that the process is underway. That's the whole point of this. It's why I used the discretionary funds that I had, the only time I used them, because I wanted to give an opportunity for the county to do the heavy lift. But what has come out of this is that it's going to take time, just like any process. You know, it doesn't always happen as quickly as we would like. And as a result, I would like to ask and request that we put a pause on the codes in terms of enforcement or the applications, as long as it doesn't hinder any public safety or any safety to livestock as well. But I really am very strongly asking, I've asked for this before, which led to the review. And that, again, is going to take, I think, longer than the impact that we have seen and will be seeing to those who choose to have equine businesses throughout Washoe County. In the discussions with Assemblywoman Hanson and the Governor's Office, as well as the Lieutenant Governor, and again with the Director of the Department of Ag, J.J. Gocicchia, it looks like there is some things that might be able to happen without going through this long legislative process, which is outside of the purview of Washoe County, certainly. But I think together we can make this fair and equitable for everyone, whether you are in the equine business or not. And I think it needs to be fair and equitable to everyone. So I would like to request that we bring an item back for a pause on that item. The second item I have is actually, again, it's outside the purview of Washoe County, but I have been spending a lot of time, and if you haven't had an opportunity to look at the sound panels on Pyramid, the very first thing that you might think is maybe big whoops. The great news is that I give a lot of acknowledgement to the Nevada Department of Transportation. NDOT has acknowledged that a mistake has been made. And it's a pretty big mistake. And so I am in discussions with NDOT. And again, I have an obligation to serve my constituents and I believe that there is an opportunity to try and rectify this. I've also reached out to the Governor's Office, who chairs the NDOT Board, along with the Lieutenant Governor, who holds that position of a vice chair. So I'm hoping we can see and hear a resolution to fix a mistake with the panels, the sound panels. So I thought I'd share that as well. And thank you for the opportunity just to get on the record that I'm trying to work on it. And I really hope that I can come back even as quick as possible with a possible solution by the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know where to start. It's just been revealed that the government's made a mistake. I don't know. Maybe we should call the meeting off. I think we've heard enough. Government made a mistake. Shocked. That being said, I'd like to move forward with some other items. I urge every citizen of this county to review the meeting that we had in this very chambers yesterday. Listen to what was said. It was three hours, three hours of on and on and on and on. You know, at the end of the day, what I have, my message to the citizens of the county is deaths are up in the homeless community. More people died last year than the year before. So just a fact. So you can talk about that in any way you want to spin that, but that's a fact. The next fact I want to bring to your attention is there's more homeless people now than there were the year before and the year before and the year before and the year before that. So that number's increasing. So deaths are up, homelessness is up. And it was revealed yesterday that we're spending about, the last four or five years, $300 million. $300 million. We've got a census that indicates we have somewhere around 1,600, 1,700 homeless people. Do the math on that. Divide the 1,700 people by $300 million and we've got $176,470 per person. With that kind of money, that would have been a down payment for 1,700 homes. We could have bought 1,700 homes. We could have built 1,700 homes. We could have done lots and lots and lots and lots of things. I'm not suggesting that money ever went in their pockets. I'm suggesting it went somewhere. I'd like to see an audit of where that money went and not an audit by the county. The county loves to audit themselves. Try that with the IRS the next time they call you down. Self-audit with the IRS. See if that one will fly. Okay? We need to find out where the money went, who's benefiting, how is it helping people? And the outcomes just don't seem to be aligning with stories in newspapers with 50% reduction. When we've got people coming over here from NPR and interviewing elected officials and others, we've got people coming over here from Sacramento, people from news stations in Sacramento and San Francisco. We've got the mayor of Anchorage, Alaska wants to copy what we're doing. You know, ask the locals around here if that's a good idea. Ask the folks that are impacted by this. The county owns the care. The county owns the CARES campus. It's surrounded by the city of Reno. The business owners that have their businesses in Reno are impacted. People are selling their businesses. People can't sell their businesses one, two. Customers don't go down, so there's a very impactful feature of having a CARES campus on Fourth Street. This is unbelievable. It's three hours of this stuff. You need to listen to it if you have any interest at all in understanding what's taking place around here. It's unbelievable. We've got elected officials from the city of Sparks. We've got elected officials from the county. We've got elected officials from the city of Reno, all saying, "It's a great job and everything's wonderful." This is like the story of the king's clothes. Everybody's telling the king the clothes are fantastic until somebody decides to say that it isn't so. We've got a problem here. And it's not going to get any better by just letting that train keep going down the track. Somebody needs to stop this and take a good, hard look. I'm going to be going to Miami next week to look at how they handle homeless down there. Hopefully, it's a silver bullet factory where they have all the right answers and we can copy that, but I don't know if that's going to be the case. I'll give you a report when I get back, but we're going to go to Miami, see what's taking place there, see if there's some good ideas that we can replicate here and find out about that. So that's something that I think, this is a hot-button issue. The public, anybody you talk to, within the first five or 10 minutes of any conversation, it's homelessness, always homelessness, the litter, everything that's going on. The public is interested in this. I don't know if the public is numbed out over this. I don't know what the reason is, but the public should be, this place should be packed every time we have a meeting with folks that want to talk about it. But I feel that people are just empathetic at this point in time and don't want to come down here and beat their head against the wall anymore. But we're here and we're going to talk about it. So that's what I want to talk about first. Next, I want to talk about some, again and again and again, I've asked for certain things to be on the agenda, and they don't come back. And I get a note from staff telling me that the Chair doesn't think that's a good idea. And so I want to make a point of order. Several months have passed since Commissioner Herman's single-item election integrity resolution started back in 227, excuse me, 227-24. Single-item election integrity resolution was submitted to Chair Hill and County Manager Brown. It's never been added to the agenda as required by Rule 5.5. Rule 5.5 states that any Commissioner may request an item be added to the agenda by submitting a written request to the Chair or County Manager at least five business days prior to the meeting. This rule is not being followed. The items have not been placed on the agenda. I demand it be placed on the agenda on the 521 Agenda under Agenda Item Number Five.
I would second that if that was a motion.
That was a motion.
I'm sure the DA has to weigh in.
Yeah, sorry, you can't be voting on items that are not on the agenda.
Thank you.
I'm voting to have an item put on an agenda. We can't vote on having an item put on the agenda?
I'll address that during my Commission comments. Commissioner Clark?
I was asking Mr. Edwards for that clarification.
No, you cannot. Sorry, no, you cannot. The item is no discussion on this item will take place. This is simply announcements, reports, and updates, and requests. So you've made a request. That's the extent of what you can do on this item.
Very well. I've asked for it numerous times, and I need to get it on the agenda so we can have a vote on it. Doesn't matter if it carries or not. It matters that it be on the agenda, and we have a vote from the Commissioners sitting up here. The public wants to know how the Commissioners feel about this. And quite frankly, personally, I think that there's certain Commissioners who don't want to vote on this. They don't want to be on the record. And I'll go further to say, you know, coming from the Assessor's Office, we get an audit from the state on a regular basis, an audit, a sampling of what we take, what takes place at the Assessor's Office. And I'm trying to get the registrar of voters votes with a sampling audit, and that's what this resolution's about. So I'm trying to get that on, and apparently, we're going to wait and see, but I'm insisting that we have this on the agenda to have a vote. Thank you.
Commissioner, for the record, real quick, if I could, Madam Chair, you know, as you know, our analysis was done on that resolution immediately, and I think you're aware of the analysis that we did on it. So that was completed. But as far as this item goes, it's not a voting item.
Very well.
Vice Chair Herman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's been heard around that we're thinking of using county employees and rewarding them for being workers during the election. And I want to make sure that everybody remembers that anybody that is in the voting booth or, I mean, in counting votes or watching what's going on, the process, that it is totally within the rules of NRS. And I think that we might have stepped out of order there if what I heard was true. So just a cautionary comment about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia?
Okay, I'm going to lighten the mood for a moment and just wish everybody Happy Mother's Day. There's mothers in the crowd, there's expecting mothers, there's people who have taken care of and fostered and adopted. There's all types of mothers out there, and I'm just giving y'all a little shout-out. You deserve a lot more than just one week in the year. I made sure to send my fellow Commissioners a text message this weekend to wish them a Happy Mother's Day, because, you know, being a mother is the hardest job in the world, I think. I thought teaching was the hardest job initially, but actually, it's being a mom. And, you know, the most difficult thing about this is juggling, you know, being a mom and being a public servant, and it's a lot of work, and I just have a lot of respect for my fellow Commissioners up here that carry both and have that. So Commissioner Clark's right, a few of us are going to Miami Dade next week, so we won't be in attendance at our upcoming County Commission meeting on May 21st. Very excited. We're going to learn about the sequential intercept model and basically looking at how mental health and substance abuse and all of these issues tie in with our criminal justice system. So we hope to bring back a lot of exciting information and innovative ways and approaches to tackle this. And on that note, I had the opportunity, because of the SEHAB meeting Chair Hill wasn't able to attend, I filled in for her at the Health and Human Services Interim Committee yesterday. And it's really exciting to see how much Washoe County is doing and how much is being coordinated. And we have a champion in the room right here. I'm going to call her out, and she'll probably be mad at me, but Julia Ratty, leading the charge in this effort, is truly an asset to Washoe County. And I can see, when I'm in the room with folks that have worked with her in the past, how much respect she has amongst Senators and legislators and, you know, the folks that work at the Legislature. So I'm just so grateful and optimistic that we are moving the needle in the right way. And it's going to take a lot of work and collaboration, and that key position right there is going to really make a world of difference for Washoe County. One of the best parts about being a County Commissioner is you get to be a part of a lot of different regional boards. And two of my regional boards have really highlighted and celebrated May as Bike Month. Northern Nevada Public Health has done a big push, and also RTC. And so I wanted to welcome the community. There's an upcoming event this Saturday. If you have little ones, if you have elderly parents, if you just want to get outside and enjoy some sunshine, we're going to be meeting at Paradise Park at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday, May 18th. And the route is completely flat, and it's a three-mile course, más o menos. And you go travel east, turn around at the Sparks Library, you could take a little break at the library, and then travel west, and we come back to Paradise Park. Open to the public, all ages are welcome. It really ties in the importance of, you know, looking at sustainability, wellness, just getting people outside, communicating, engaging with each other. Social isolation can be a real significant issue for our seniors. So you can walk it, ride it, roll it, whatever you want. But the RTC improvements, I know it looks very messy down here, but when you travel on Audi Wells, I see somebody shaking their head, it is incredible, what a transformation that has been in the community. And it's a game changer for District Three. There's a lot of great projects happening in District Three on RTC's end, from, you know, improvements along Sun Valley Boulevard to Sixth Street. And so there's a lot to celebrate. Please join us in partnership with Trucking Metals Bicycle Alliance and a lot of great nonprofits, giving away bikes, partnering with Bernice Matthews. It's just a really feel-good project, so I'm grateful to be a part of it.
Thank you. Any other Board members have comments?
Commissioner, Chair, are you going to go first?
You go ahead, Mr. Manager.
So I did get shared with me a couple of Board openings.
Great.
As is our custom, the first meeting of the month, we usually share those. First is Nevada Clean Energy Fund Board has an opening that closes this Friday, May 17th. And then the Washoe County Home Consortium has a partial term through June 30th of 2026 that closes this Friday, May 17th also. That's a very important board. The other thing, Madam Chair, is I'd just like to clarify, I was at SEHAB yesterday. What I heard the consultant say was that the region needs to be prepared to spend $300 million for housing, for affordable housing for the region. I didn't, I'm happy to bring-
I heard the same thing.
I'm happy to bring staff into, we've given detailed reports of CARES Campus spending. If it's time for another update on that, I'm happy to bring them in, and we can do that. But the $300 million figure was a figure that the region needs to think about in terms of future capital spending to make affordable housing available. Thank you.
And isn't the county audited every year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. By an outside firm, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will move on to proclamations. And Commissioner Andriola is going to lead us off with a proclamation for 5A1. Mr. Manager, if you'll read into the record as she walks up.
5A1 proclaim May 14th, 2024, and the week of May 12th through May 18th, 2024, as Peace Officer Memorial Day and National Police Week.
Great, and I think we have folks from the Sheriff's Office-
We do have the leadership from Washoe County Sheriff's Office. Welcome.
Hello. Good, thank you. How are you? Ready? Okay. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Board of County Commissioners, whereas every day, public safety officers work tirelessly to protect our citizens, enforce laws, and keep our neighborhoods safe, reporting for duty, knowing full well the dangers they face and the sacrifices they may be called upon to make. And whereas, this week, Washoe County pays tribute to the thousands of men and women who service with extraordinary bravery. And we remember the heroes who have laid down their lives in pursuit of a safer, more just society. And whereas, while we can never repay them for their service, we must work to ensure our law enforcement officers are equipped with the tools and technology they need to do their jobs safely and effectively. And whereas, Washoe County owes a profound debt to all those who have worn the badge and the families whose care enables them to serve with courage and pride. When the unthinkable happens and officers give their lives or are seriously injured in the line of duty, we have an obligation to give their loved ones the support they deserve. And whereas, during Peace Officers Memorial Day and National Police Week, we recall the selfishness of our law enforcement officers and their families, and we honor all those who devote their lives to forging a stronger, safer America. Let us reflect on their invaluable contributions as we enjoy the peace they bring to our communities, and let us vow that their service will never be taken for granted. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 14th and the week of May 12th through May 18th as Peace Officer Memorial Week, Day, and National Police Week.
Wonderful. And Sheriff, do you have anything to say?
Absolutely. Sheriff Banfield, record, Chair and Commissioners, first of all, thank you on behalf of all the men and women in law enforcement, not just the Sheriff's Office, for attending our memorials of the last two weeks at Carson Hoff and the Sheriff's Office. And thank you for recognizing, as you can see, executive staff's here, because all of those brave men and women are out serving our community. So thank you for recognizing them. I know this means a lot, so we all appreciate it on behalf of all of them. I appreciate it.
Thank you all for your service. We're so grateful. Okay, and next up is 5A2. Mr. Manager, if you can start to read that.
5A2 is a proclamation to proclaim the month of May 2024 as International Internal Audit Awareness Month. And in chambers, there she is.
I'm proud to serve as the alternate on the Audit Committee and love working with this team. So the Board of County Commissioners proclaim, whereas internal auditing is an independent, objective assurance and consulting activity designed to add value and improve the organization's operations, internal auditors are explorers, analysts, problem solvers, reporters, and trusted advisors. Today's internal audit professionals are revered for their critical thinking and communication skills, as well as industry-specific business knowledge. And whereas, professional internal auditors agree to abide by the code of ethics that it holds the principles of integrity, objectivity, confidentiality, and competency. They raise red flags when they discover improper conduct. Internal auditors with solid understanding of the organization's objectives examine the operations to determine whether they are efficient and effective. And whereas, internal auditors investigate possible fraudulent behavior throughout the organization with access to all records and the authority to conduct audits at any level of the organization. And whereas, internal auditors stand as the third line of defense and are nimble with the broadest view of organizational risk. And whereas, internal auditors and supporters across America are celebrating International Internal Audit Awareness Month. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as International Internal Audit Awareness Month. And congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. And do you want to say something? Just thank the Board for recognizing internal audit awareness and our importance to the county and upholding our values. Thank you.
And Commissioner Andriola, was that a motion on both proclamations?
Yes.
And I will second that. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on the proclamations?
There is none.
Okay, with a motion and a second, any questions from the Board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay.
Commissioner Clark? Thank you.
And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for coming out so we could celebrate your work at Washoe County. Next up is item six, Mr. Manager.
Item six is a presentation by Maurice Page, Executive Director of Nevada Housing Coalition, to provide updates on Nevada Housing Coalition and housing in Washoe County.
Welcome.
Good morning. Good morning. It's been a little while since I've been able to make it here. Been trying to get in for the last few months, but I'm happy to see that I'm here today. Do I just press the button? I'm sorry.
I think so, to forward the slides. It should work. There we go.
Okay, perfect. So with that being said, again, my name is Maurice Page. I'm the Executive Director of the Nevada Housing Coalition. And again- And again, I am honored to stand before you to address a matter of importance to the County of Washoe: affordable housing. In recent years, the County of Washoe has taken proactive steps to tackle the affordability issues in the community, recognizing the challenges faced by many of Washoe residents. I would first like to commend the County Commissioners for their focus and determination to make things better for those suffering from the housing shortage. In our discussion today, we confront a stark division. On one side, there are those that are living in the midst of a housing crisis, grappling daily with the reality of seeking better, stable living conditions. They face daily challenges that many of us can only imagine. On the other side, there are those of us who observe from the sidelines. Our role is to understand, to advocate, and to work towards solutions that bridge this gap, ensuring that our understanding translates into meaningful action. As we dig and as I go through the session this morning, let's remember that our objective is not to just discuss, but to act and to make tangible differences in the lives of those who are most affected. And with that being said, the Nevada Housing Coalition is a 501(c)(3) statewide member-based nonprofit. We, most recently, once I came on board, excuse me, one of the things as I came on as the Executive Director about seven months ago, our Board of Directors came to me and said, you know, the climate is changing here in the state of Nevada, and we really need to be able to focus on housing as a whole. And so with that being said, we had updated our mission statement to reflect a, to promote the development and preservation of affordable housing for all Nevadans through collaboration, education, and advocacy. Following, we also provided or created a vision statement that goes to state, that states that Nevada is where, Nevada where all residents have access to an affordable place to call home. We all know that housing is fundamental to personal and community well-being. Stable and affordable housing forms the cornerstone of thriving communities. So within collaboration with industry leaders, educational bodies, and community organizations, we aim to build an ecosystem that not only supports housing development, but also empowers Nevadans to engage in sustainable living practices. And with that, you can always know that the Nevada Housing Coalition is a trusted partner. Some of the other activities and programs that we service and to be able to educate those about affordable housing comes under our Elevate Nevada program. This is where we work with nonprofits, emerging developers within our state. We provide technical assistance, capacity building in regards to helping others learn about affordable housing, because we all know we didn't really go to school for that. And we teach them how to pencil a deal, what this means, what li-tech means, how does the bond structure works. And so therefore, we can build up that next generation of developers here within our state. Some of the largest, and not the largest, but one of our biggest components again is about advocacy. And so we have been at the forefront and standing tall and standing, as the young kids say, on business in regards to creating more affordable housing within the state of Nevada. One of our huge accomplishments just occurred last session during the 2023, and that was AB 310, which is our Supportive Housing Development Fund. This fund will go towards, oh, this is a one-shot deal of $32.2 million first, first of its kind. And so this will go towards the development and sustainability of people who are struggling to maintain housing. So what this money will go towards, and all realistically, is for those individuals who are struggling with income, struggling with mental health, struggling with maybe substance abuse, anything that prevents a hurdle, childcare, that will hurt them in the long run in regards to maintaining their housing. We felt like this would be a tremendous opportunity to show that not only housing, housing should not only be talked about from a homeless perspective, but it should be talked about from an entire field of housing, meaning workforce, seniors. We have to get away, affordable does not just mean low income. It means we're looking at everybody, our firefighters, our school teachers, our casino workers, our janitors, our people, our sales associates that work at Target and Walmarts and things of that nature. They are all struggling, and we need to develop more affordable housing so that they can maintain and sustain their housing going forward. Just imagine if a person can be able to lay in their own bed, be able to, you know, have, be able to know that their kids are safe and sound, their kids can now go to school well-rested with a bright mind, a clear mind, to be able to listen to the teacher, learn, and move forward. Consequently, with a worker, if you're home, you know you have a roof over your head, your bills are able to be paid, you can go to work focusing on your job to be able to do your best work. And so, again, not only with AB 310, we have also assisted and advocated for AB 62, AB 448, and 396. So many of you will know this, but again, when we talk about the housing affordability, it varies across the housing spectrum. Of course, it's three different tiers. You have the zero to 60% AMI, the 60 to 80%, and then you have the 80 to 120% area medium income. Some of the numbers, as we look through, and these numbers were just recent from the National Low Income Housing Coalition, is where Nevada stands at currently in regards to housing. So as you can see that number, that 91,243 or 19%, that is shows that renters households are with, are needed for extremely low incomes. So a few years ago, that number was around 80,000. So that number has now increased to 91,000. And again, we're looking at it from the spectrum, right? Extreme low income. You look at 78,000, that is the shortage of rental homes affordable and available for extremely low-income individuals. And then that is the average income. And so what we have seen since about 2011 is the housing prices skyrocketed about 240% with wages only increasing by 30 to 40% during that same timeframe. And so therefore, people are getting priced out. You know, I always give the story that when I moved, first moved to the state of Nevada, my first home was $100,000. Where do you find a $100,000 home nowadays, right? It's very hard to find. With our median home sales price at around 450 statewide, and with rents anywhere from 1,600 to 1,700. There was a part, it was a point in time where you could get a one-bedroom for roughly $400 or $500. And now you have to make upwards of $23 to $26 an hour just to maintain that one-bedroom apartment. So Nevada's affordable housing supply, this is very unique in that, and again, these numbers were taken back in 2022. And my office is looking to currently update these numbers and to see where we at currently. But you look at that number, 36,187, that's a number throughout the whole state of how many affordable housings there is. So you're looking in it, and at the low end, you have, if you look at the 30 to 35% AMI, again, which you're looking at the extreme low-income individuals, we only have 1,100 units statewide, okay? That's not going to work. You see that we are, we have assisted units, we have close to 10,000, and we have between that 55 to 60% AMI, it's almost, it's roughly almost 15,000 homes that we have. And again, it goes back to math. You know, when you think about the tax credits that we get and the loans, it's easier for us to be able to pencil in and be able to create housing for that 60% and below. However, when you get the lower percentage, lower AMI housing, it is just very hard for our developers to be able to go in and really make a deal, put a deal in place so that we can house those individuals. That's why it's important that we look at more long-term funding strategies so that this way we can increase our numbers. Now, great thing about it is we've had HM&amp;I, Home Means Nevada Initiative, that has come in. And over the last, you know, few years, we've been able to put in the pipeline roughly about, almost close to 4,000 new homes that will be coming in. That is a huge win. We also have other additional fundings, the Community Housing Fund that Clark County is also using, and we have been able to develop some other additional, do some gap financing with that. The goal of it here is, though, we know that we are in a crisis, and we know that there is no immediate solutions. However, we're here as a partner, as a trusted partner, to be able to come to the table and let's talk about how we can, you know, merge and create other solutions, maybe create best practices, so that this way we can ultimately create more affordable housing. When you look at housing affordability, again, and this is just, you know, just the basic numbers, need to afford, if you look at the studio, is $42,000. That's just to afford a studio. When you look at the salaries on the other end, you look at the general and operation managers, you have $86,000, that's the top end. You have maintenance workers, repair workers, 47. And if you fast forward all the way to the end, the fast food and county workers, you're looking at, and counter workers, excuse me, you're making almost $24,300. A lot of those individuals are, you know, trying to either survive, so they're either staying in the studio, or they're staying in a one-bedroom, and you see where the price point is for them to be able to maintain that type of housing. That's a disparity that we definitely need to look at, and we need to be able to increase our wages so that this way we can keep the balance in. Of course, it all boils down to the other end of the spectrum, it does boil down to supply and demand. If we can, you know, put more housing in, that'll lower the costs a little. But of course, we have to also work with our day-to-day workers to ensure that they're getting compensated fairly. In comparison, this is where we're at with Reno. So again, the same amount, 42,000. However, in Reno, your hotel motel resort desk clerks are making closer to 30,000, retail salespersons are making closer to 30,000. And then on your top end, your general and operation managers are making in essence of $94,000. Again, when you talk about homeownership affordability in Reno, and again, I'm just giving you a broad base, right? This is just giving you an overall look of comparing where we at. When you look at the annual income needed for a 10% down payment, you need 182, you need to be making upwards of $182,763. And then when you compare that to your workers, again, and let's focus in on your elementary school teachers, child family, social workers, they're making anywhere between 60 and 65,000. Again, we're getting priced out. These people are struggling. We need to help, and we need to find solutions fast. And then you look at the cost-burner renter households in Washoe County. And again, you're looking at where it's okay. You look at the 1,400, the number that 1,400, very extreme low, where there's a lot of folks that is, you know, below the radar, that is struggling to make, to make it, to make ends meet. And again, these are individuals that are working, right? They're just making minimum wage. They just don't have the other, the other incomes to be able to take on the other expenses, whether it's childcare, healthcare, or just the day-to-day issues, maybe it's transportation or whatever the case may be. So this kind of gives you an overview of where we're at and where we need to look at in regards to where housing is and where we need to go. So again, I didn't want to take up too much of your time, but I wanted to just kind of give you an overview of where the Coalition is. Again, what I have done over the last seven months since I've been in my position is gone out and meet with our elected leaders, our community leaders, trying to get a overview of where we are at as far as housing in the state of Nevada, where we think we should go. We have created a policy committee that will be meeting, and hopefully will be crafting some possible solutions, possible new policy to help us with, again, the goal of creating more long-term funding strategies in regards to affordable housing. But with that being said, I would like to say, you know, we will have our, we will have a policy forum in July, July 25th, at the Nugget in Sparks. And then we will have our conference, our national, our annual housing conference in October, October 16th and 17th, also at the Nugget Sparks. So with that being said, I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me today. I'll take any questions, and I am done.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Great work, and I commend you and the team on the Home Means Nevada Initiative. That was, that was all of the Nevada Housing Coalition's work, so kudos. You've totally changed what we can do on a local level. We're looking at, you know, starting to build those permanent supporting units. We received the funding for those 50 units, and can't thank you enough for that group's effort to make that happen for us. So looking to the Board for questions or comments? I'm not seeing any, but I have some questions. So you're, you're building a policy question, or policy committee. Do you have any ideas on legislative solutions you're going to be carrying forward, or is that still kind of?
It's still new, so we're fleshing it out. We're actually going to have our first meeting this week. So, but like I said earlier, what I have done over the last six months is I've met throughout, throughout the whole state with our leaders to kind of get a high-level review of where, what are the needs. And the biggest concern, and one thing that we can always say, is we need long-term funding, right? And we'll keep going back to that, because we know that the, with the HM&amp;I funds going away in the next couple of years, you know, we won't be able to build as fast as what we've done in the last, over the last two, three years. And so in order to keep the momentum and to not further fall behind the spectrum in regards to housing, we need to figure out how we can work with the Governor and the state and the federal delegations to be able to create some funding, some funding streams, excuse me, so that this way we can continue to build.
Well, and yesterday at the Community Homeless Advisory Board, we heard a recommendation of bringing our local jurisdictions together to be laser-focused on this issue, to bring all of our resources, land, funding, tax incentives, et cetera. And perhaps there is a way that we could pair, you know, kind of pushing local governments like ours to work together in order to get that funding. Maybe the state would feel more comfortable knowing we're all, you know, rowing in the same direction. So, you know, that's something that I want to see our group work on, and any, any helps, you know, that you, you and your group could provide, and being a convener for us would be amazing, because I think that that's the next step that the Homeless Board really wants to work on, is the housing piece. That's so important.
And again, I know we talk about, I know you had the convening with the housing, with the, with the Homeless Committee, yes, a Homeless Advisory Committee, but again, we have to address housing overall, right? We have to look at it from this full spectrum. But yes, the Coalition would love to be able to be that convener to bring all of the jurisdictions together. We know that, number one, we have to get our data corrected, and so we have to see where we at. And what it really means, honestly, when we bring new homes on, right? Does that increase the level of engagement with our school district? What is the infrastructure going to look like with all of that? So it's not just about, you know, just building a new housing or preserving new housing that's already here, but it's really about the infrastructure around it. We want to make sure that people are still able to get to work, people are able to get to school, people have access to healthcare, childcare, and everything around that.
Absolutely. Any other board members have? Yes, Manager Brown.
For the record, County Manager Eric Brown, I just want to acknowledge Maurice's efforts. In a short period of time, he has come on and really gotten the attention, I think, of the right stakeholders. I've attended a couple, a couple of sessions with him here locally where developers were there, people from the other jurisdictions. It's really been a very productive conversation. Could I get you to go back to Slide Six? The housing supply side? Because I just want to share, yes. So you see down at the bottom where he's got 30 to 35% AMI, and there are only 1,100 units in the whole state. These are, this is, this is the category of housing that the county is focused on as we try to transition people out of our shelters into housing. Most of them, based on the numbers he's shared with you, cannot afford to be at the top, at the 60% plus AMI sector. So, and you see that, that the supply is much more severely limited there, which is causing us problems. The other thing I will say to you that I want people to start thinking about, and it came up at C-HAB yesterday, we are starting to see an increase in working people, people who have incomes, but they're showing up at the shelters because they are priced out. This is not going to go away.
And rental assistance-
Rental assistance also.
Going away as well.
So I think we need to come, the staff needs to come back to the Board and with an update and maybe give you some recommendations, because it is not a static situation, it's one that we can't ignore. And the numbers he's sharing really bear it out, so thank you.
Absolutely. And we're, and just to note as well, we're working with the Gwin Center. They're putting together a needs assessment on the housing needs and throughout the state. So we're working with, my office is working with them. We'll hopefully be putting together a report that can be published by October.
Wonderful. Commissioner Andriola?
I just had a question in terms of how, I know you have Nevada numbers and then drilling down to our locality, but I'm wondering how this trend is nationally. drilling down to our locality, but I'm wondering how this trend is nationally, especially in terms of comparability with this increase of, you know, economic disparity, if you will, of wages versus, um, you know, housing costs? And I'm just wondering how we compare to other, um, similar, uh, state sizes, or even if you have county sizes?
I don't have county sizes, um, but I do have other states. Um, I don't have all the numbers. I don't want to be quoted necessarily, but it is a fairly huge gap, um, that we're facing, um, around the country. One of the, um, again, I've looked at Washington State, I've looked at, uh, Texas, and I've looked at Florida as well, just as, um, and Arizona, and looked at where they're at, and they're facing the same type of, of gap, although Arizona is a little bit better than where we are. Um, but of course, with, with the, uh, transitional folks moving into that state, or folks moving in from other states, it's getting really out of hand at this point.
Are there economic trend factors that are contributing to this? If, if it seems to be, um, the same problem in other areas? I mean, is it inflation, or what kind of root causes?
It's more or less inflation. You know, people are looking and trying to retire, um, or looking for just where their cheaper homes are at. And so, so for instance, with the Texas, um, they have the land they're able to build, so people are, are, are moving there. Of course, they, their tax structure is somewhat similar to like Nevada with no state taxes. However, with the increase of folks moving there, they've had to build more, and now, of course, people are starting to get priced out. They're starting to have to live or move into the suburban or outskirts of like Houston and Dallas and San Antonio, uh, which is driving costs up. They don't have the, the right infrastructure, uh, as well, and so they're starting to go through the same hurdles that we're going through.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members? Not seeing any. Thank you for taking the time to present to us and looking forward to future collaborations.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
You too. Um, now we will move to item seven, Mr. Manager.
Item seven is an appearance, presentation, and update by Tracy Moore, Washoe County School District, and Quinn Corbulick, Corbulick, I can never say Quinn's name, Washoe County Tech Services, on the development, construction, and implementation of Nevada Shared Radio System.
Welcome.
Welcome, Commissioner Chair, uh, Manager Brown, and Commissioners. My name is Tracy Moore. I am the Chief of the Washoe County School District, and I'm also your Chairman of the Joint Operating Committee. Been a chairman of that committee for six years and have served on that committee probably since my career, uh, with the school district started in two thousand and five. Um, we're here in front of you today to give you a broad update of what we're moving forward with the construction of our new public safety radio system. Uh, a little bit of history on the item. Uh, I was a public servant back when I was sixteen years old with the volunteer fire service, and we had some communication problems as a, as a community. We couldn't talk to each other, we didn't have that capability. So back in nineteen ninety-nine, uh, that was developed to perform, I, I won't get too much of the technical terms, but to conform, to perform a, a committee that would solve this problem. We have consultants that came in, and we came into the current system we're operating on now, which is kind of known as the EDACs. But it's a public safety radio system. Through this process, the state Nevada had the same issue. Where we have a common denominator here, we can't talk to each other, we need statewide radio coverage, and we need it to work to our abilities. We, as Washoe County, are a partner in that system, this Nevada Shared Radio System. That also includes private government entities. That was a hurdle we had to achieve, because this system was designed for public safety, government agencies. So we're able to get an agreement, and I'm proud to say that part of that system is also Nevada Energy, uh, our federal agencies, and tribal agencies. So it really is a true public partnership in this radio system. We need this system for daily operations, public safety emergency events, active assailant events, special events, community evacuations, and our daily operations. It allows, regardless of what uniform or badge I'm wearing, we have the ability to basically take my radio, click it over, and talk to other government agencies. But we're coming to a hurdle. As we continue to build into the new system, our system is antiquated. We can't sustain it. We can't get parts. Our, our radio technicians do the best of their abilities to keep the system up and running, but we're reaching the end of life. And as we continue to move forward on the new system, we're reaching some, you know, unforeseen, really high construction cost. We, as a group, have to make some critical decisions. We only have so much money. How are we going to come up with it? So we are exploring some other options. Quinn will have some numbers for you, but we're looking right now to move forward with the plan. We're going to be about six million dollars over budget. So who pays for that? We do. Sparks Fire, Reno Fire, Tribal, we all have to burden that cost. We all know, this is a tough time. I have to buy into this radio system. I have to buy new radios, my police cars, my, my schools. It's a cost. It's a, like a double whammy. Uh, I have to buy for the system that goes up on the mountaintops, and we have to buy new radios and put in our patrol cars to make it happen. I can tell you, this is one item that we cannot overlook, put on the back burner. It's something we have to invest in and take this very serious. This is a lot of money, and I can assure you, as your Chairman of this committee, we're going to try to find every option we can to fund this system. This is from Northern Washoe County, Carson City, statewide. I take my radio, it'll work anywhere in the state of Nevada. And you all know that Washoe County is a critical component in providing resources to our neighboring counties. So Quinn, anything else you want to throw? I'm going to pass off to Quinn. He's going to go over the, uh, technical specs as we move forward with this construction build.
Thank you, Tracy, for your excellent introduction. Um, so Quinn Corbulick, Washoe County Technology Services. Uh, this Nevada Shared Radio System project has been on our strategic plan, and we've been working on it since about two thousand and eighteen. And we have only provided, I think, one update to the Commission, and the only Commissioner who was on the Commission at that time was Gene Herman. So, uh, this is a good time to give you an update and also talk about some of the issues that, that Tracy brought up. So, um, I'm going to provide a, a brief overview and update on our, uh, Nevada Shared Radio System project status. So as Tracy alluded to, the Nevada Shared Radio System is a public safety radio system that supports over forty different agencies across the state. Um, the system is primarily used for public safety communications, so this includes dispatch, uh, law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical response agencies. Um, outside of Washoe County, uh, there are a few examples that I want to provide of other agencies that use this system, and those are, include the Nevada Highway Patrol, Department of Corrections, Nye County, Story County, Mineral County, Elko County, um, and the State Capitol Police. Washoe County has worked with NDOT and NV Energy since the nineteen nineties, as Tracy noted, to operate and manage the statewide radio system. And so this is, with NV Energy, this is a true public and private partnership. I do want to highlight the map here. So obviously, this is a map of the, the state, and each little dot is a radio site. The red dots are NV Energy sites, green are Nevada Department of Transportation, and blue, and obviously in Washoe County, are the Washoe County sites. One thing I want to point out on this map is that NV Energy and NDOT do have sites in, uh, Washoe County. So we benefit from their participation in this partnership, and we gain radio coverage from their sites. So we have to upgrade the system. Tracy mentioned this. We have a twenty-year-old system. The vendor no longer supports it. Uh, we cannot, we, there are no parts for sale. We have to go out and buy parts from old systems that have been decommissioned. Um, so we're upgrading the system for, for that primary reason, but we're also u- upgrading to a new technology, which is called P-25. You guys may have heard, in our strategic plan, it's called the P-25 Radio System. This is, uh, an open standard technology, and I'll talk more about that on the next slide. And the other thing that we're doing is expanding coverage. So we're going from a hundred and fifteen sites to a hundred and thirty-five sites. So that's going to increase radio cover, coverage across the state. So a little bit deeper into the technology, uh, we're upgrading from a proprietary system to a P-25 open standard technology. And P-25 is short for Project Twenty-Five, and that's an open standard, uh, set by the Association of Public Safety Communications Officers, or APCO. Um, this open standard basically means that any P-25 compliant radio from any manufacturer can operate on our system. Um, the way our system works now is if you don't have a Harris radio, the Harris, your radio will not work on our system. So it's a Harris system, and you need to have a Harris radio. So we only have one vendor to work with in terms of purchasing radios. And so this new system will open that up and allow us to have a little bit more flexibility. The new system will provide improved communications and, and statewide coverage interoperability, uh, and it will also improve and increase capacity. And increase capacity in two ways. One is that there will be, uh, additional or higher capacity, uh, at, for emergencies. So let's say there's a, a, a large fire or a school shooting, and there's a lot of traffic on our radio system. Um, right now, our system might queue, meaning that somebody clicks their, their radio button, and it basically doesn't work until they, until the system uncues. Um, with the new system, there will be capacity to cover those really large incidents. The other capacity here that we're increasing is that the new system will provide virtually unlimited users. And contrast this with our current system where we have, uh, a max of sixteen thousand users, and we're basically at capacity right now. So there's a, a huge pent-up demand for new radios to be added to the system. So when we switch over to the new system, we'll be able to, uh, meet that demand for new radios. Um, switching gears to contract, um, we have a contract with the Harris Corporation, or now called L-Three Harris. Uh, we worked, worked with NDOT in two thousand and seventeen, and NV Energy to select Harris through an RFP process that, that NDOT administered. I'm seeing the time is low, so I'm going to skip a couple of things here. So we signed our contract in two thousand and eighteen, kicked off the project, then, um, and you can see that we set up the project to, to, to be implemented in three regions. So Region One, obviously, Southern Nevada, and that started right when we started the project. Um, Region Two is the northwestern portion of the state. Region Three is the northeastern portion of the state. One of the things I want to highlight here is that we are pretty far along in the project. So in Region One, they're just about done. Uh, they're working through what we're calling coverage validation, and so when, through our contract, L-Three Harris is required to provide a certain amount of radio coverage, and we're, and right now, we're validating that that coverage is available in Region One. Once they do that, and once Harris meets a number of other requirements, we'll be able to sign off and cut over Region One, and that's scheduled to happen in August of this year. Um, for us, in Region Two, that's going to be May of two thousand and twenty-six, and then for the final system, uh, for the full system, it's the summer of two thousand and twenty-seven. So zooming in a little bit, um, we have the Nevada Shared Radio System here in Washoe County. We have the Washoe County Regional Communication System. We have sixteen radio sites, nineteen agencies who use the system. You can see on the right, uh, that is the table of the agencies, and basically that's sorted by the agencies who use the system the most, all the way down to the agencies who have just four radios, like Incline Village, GID. One of, one of the things I want to highlight here is that the, the primary benefit of the system is that, and, and Tracy mentioned this as well, we can all talk. There is complete interoperability between all of these agencies. So when there is an emergency where multiple agencies need to respond, they can all get on the same talk group and talk together and respond to the agency and communicate. And so there's no information lost when they're responding to an emergency. And this is also similar and complementary to our discussion when we're talking about the regional CAD. We're talking about having a system that there is no information lost when, when a call is transferred or anything. So this basically does the same thing. We have that complementary system. We have no communications lost between agencies with this system. We do have an inter-local agreement between all of these agencies, uh, and that covers operations administration and a fee structure. I won't go too, too deep into that. Move right along. So as far as our system progress is concerned in Washoe County, um, I want to point out the map again. This map is a little bit different. So with the, on this map, the blue dots are completed sites. The yellow dots are in progress, and the, and the red are delayed. Um, I want to point out that not all the sites on, on this map are existing sites. So we have to build a few greenfield sites. And specifically, there are, there is Smoky Courts, which is kind of up above Sparks, if you guys, so we know where Golden Eagle Park is. It's kind of up above Golden Eagle Park. Um, and then we have Seven Lakes, which is up north of Red Rock, Rancho Haven area. Those are, we, we're targeting those spots, sites for construction because we know that there is, uh, gaps in public safety radio communications. So if, if a, a police, a police officer is patrolling in Golden Eagle Park, he has, he or she has no public safety radio communication there. So there's a gap there. There's gaps along Pyramid Highway, there's gaps up in Rancho, uh, Haven and Red Rock. So we're building those sites to, to, to fill in those gaps. So that's a really important part of what I want to get across here, is that we have those greenfield sites, and that will kind of get us into the, the conversation around with the co, the cost. Um, a couple other things here. We're working through leases. There's actually a lease on the agenda today that we're leasing the Red, uh, Red Peak site up, that's right up above, uh, just north of TMCC. Um, and we're also working on leases with, with BLM for those two sites, uh, Smoky Courts and, and Seven Lakes. So really high-level project status update. Um, so we're basically on track, and I want to put an asterisk here. Uh, we did have, uh, about a year delay at the beginning of the project because the vendor, L-Three Harris, was not performing. So we gave them some time. We basically said, no, let's not, let's not continue to work until you guys get it together. So they put together their appropriate staff resources, schedule materials, all that stuff, and then we were able to re, basically restart the project. So after we restarted, we're back on track. Um, our schedule is on track. Couple of the risks that we have, I mentioned, are BLM permitting. Um, having said that, we're working with NDOT to expedite, expedite that. NDOT has, also has BLM permits that they're working with. Uh, and we're anticipating that we should receive those BLM permits here in the fall, late fall timeframe, which would allow us to construct those greens, greenfield sites in the summer of two thousand and twenty-five. Now, caution flag on budget. So Tracy mentioned this. We have, uh, construction cross. When we signed the contract in two thousand and eighteen, the costs have gone up substantially. So, right, we started the, the, to build the system in two thousand and eighteen in the southern part of the state, and as we've moved up, time has passed. Of course, we've had a pandemic and, and a ton of inflation, and so we have a sub, very substantial, uh, uh, cost overrun that we're projecting. Um, and having said that, we're working with our partners to find the most equitable solution to figure out how we're going to cover these costs and share these costs. And just from a timing perspective, we don't necessarily need additional funds until we get to next summer, so we're working through, actually, we've, we've, we've been working on an addendum to our, in our local agreement, uh, for about a year, and we anticipate that we'll have that completed before we go into the construction next year, and so we'll have, uh, an agreement on covering those costs. The other part is that we're not leaving any stone unturned in terms of grant funding. So we're looking for alternative funding sources. Um, and so where we've hired a consultant to help us with that, we're working with a, a company called Lexipol that will be able to help us write a grant when we identify a, a funding source. Um, so again, and sorry, finally, we're also prioritizing. So we know we have those several greenfield sites or some, uh, construction projects, which ones are the most important, and which ones are we going to construct first, and which ones maybe we can put on the back burner. So I do want to conclude, um, by acknowledging, over the last couple of years, uh, the staff, um, for the radio system and the radio shop have worked really, really hard to make this happen. Not only are they, they're doing their regular jobs, but they're helping to build this new system. Um, they're especially dedicated, they know their mission, and they're, they really take pride in what they do, so I want to thank them, uh, for what they do. Having said that, thank you, and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you. Do you know what the cost overrun is, and what those agreement, are they, those agreements going to be coming to this board eventually?
The agreements will eventually come to the board, and depending on our, how we prioritize our construction, it could be anywhere from three-point-two million to what Tracy said is around six million.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And are we looking at infrastructure bonds through the state of Nevada? That may be a good opportunity.
We are, like I said, not leaving any.
Okay.
We are, like I said, not leaving any stone unturned.
Great, great. Looking to the board to see if there's any other questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Great work, and thank you for your dedication and for the team and their dedication. And looking forward to getting the updates and supporting you along your efforts. Cannot wait for the new system to come online.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. We are going to move into our consent items. And I'm wondering if there's any commissioners who are looking to pull any consent items or have questions on the consent. 8A through 8H1, Commissioner Clark?
I'd like to pull 8D1, please.
Do you have questions, or you want to?
Questions and discussion, yes.
Okay. Any other commissioners? Okay. I am looking for a motion minus 8D1 for the consent, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola, looking for a second. Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. And Madam Clerk, I see we have a little bit of public comment.
We do. Let's see. Amy Owens, followed by Andrea Peltow.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Amy Owens, and I'm before you this morning as I have applied for the position on the Washoe County Planning Commission for District 3. And I'm here to introduce myself and tell you a little bit about me. I am a native Nevadan, and I've lived in District 3 intermittently for about 20 years, with the last nine years being a resident of Sun Valley. I have an associate's degree in biology, and I currently work for the State of Nevada in the Research and Analysis Bureau, which compiles and releases labor, industry, and unemployment statistics for the state of Nevada. My joy in service to our local community started in my youth when I joined the International Order of the Rainbow for Girls, which is a Masonic youth service organization for girls between the ages of 11 and 20. In this organization, I learned valuable leadership skills, planning, public speaking, and the opportunity to volunteer in our community and make a difference in the lives of others. We partnered with organizations like the Reno Sparks Gospel Mission and Senior Services to raise money and serve others. During my time as a Rainbow Girl, I was leader of my chapter three times, held two state offices, and received the highest honor for excellence in service called the Grand Cross of Color. I currently volunteer with the Children's Cabinet, and I'm thankful to give back to them as they were so generous to me in my youth. I'm also a member of CERT, which is the Community Emergency Response Team, which is a volunteer team with the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, where we receive training on emergency preparedness and assist in actual events such as assistance with, excuse me, evacuation during fire season and flood watch. We also do a lot of outreach with our community and assist in events such as the Hot August Nights and the Reno Rodeo. In addition to CERT, I'm also a member of the Citizens Homeland Security Council, which we learn about situational awareness, and we implement the See Something, Say Something initiative. Lastly, I'm a board member on the Sun Valley Cab. I've been on that position for about a year now, and it's been illuminating to hear the concerns of our residents and their love of Sun Valley. Being a board member has shown me a completely different side to my community and has opened the door for me to become more involved. Being on the cab has led me to apply for this position as I hear everyone's concerns and have opportunities to make impact that makes positive change for our community. For example, I helped a citizen get a crosswalk light fixed, thanks to 311. And it's moments like that where I just wish that I was able to do more for my community. I believe that being on the planning commission will afford me the opportunity to make meaning and meaningful and lasting changes in my community. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Andrea Peltow.
Good afternoon, Washoe County Commissioners. For the record, my name is Andrea Peltow, and I'm here today on behalf of both Chaplain Jazz Blackburn and myself. Chaplain Jazz Blackburn wanted to be here in person to share his extreme gratitude to all the commissioners and Washoe County constituents for both the donations and distribution of discretionary funds to the Great Basin Chaplain Corps and the Circle of Life Hospice Foundation for the Circle of Life Guest House Social Model Hospice House. Unfortunately, Chaplain Jazz has fallen ill, but is recovering slowly. Both organizations and their projects are an everybody issue and a nonpartisan issue. We need to continue to all get involved in these missions as they both cover gap areas of a growing need for support for all levels of our community, and of course, especially for seniors. I have recently accepted the position of treasurer for the Circle of Life Hospice Foundation. Being a local senior advocate, I hear stories daily about seniors suffering from both isolation and not having a stable roof over their heads. This social model hospice house will at least give the most vulnerable of these, the dying, a place to be cared for during those final days. Isn't dying with peace and dignity what we would all want and deserve? This is why I feel this project is so important to get off the ground, and it is imperative we see it through all phases of fruition. Thank you so very much from the bottom of both of our hearts.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So with a motion by Commissioner Andriola and a second by Vice Chair Herman, we are going to move forward with consent minus 8D1.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I add a just quick disclosure on item 8F3? Thank you, sorry to interrupt you.
No worries.
I just want to disclose that I am an employer of the University of Nevada Reno. My work is in education and has no relation to this law enforcement reimbursement, so I'll be voting on that item.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Okay, a motion and a second. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, that motion passes. We will now move forward with 8D1. Commissioner Clark?
Yes, I'd just like to get on the record. We covered this with the other courts, and I see now that Sparks and Wadworth and Incline Village want to be included in this. Is there any other compelling reasons for this, other than that was missed the first time? What exactly, why exactly is this back on the agenda?
Manager Brown, do you?
I don't have an update on that.
I thought the last one was for Reno Justice Court.
It was, it was for a different justice court. But it looks like Ms. Thomas is coming down, and perhaps she can illuminate why it's a different agenda item.
Thank you, for the record, Kate Thomas. You're exactly right. It's a, it's a different court. They operate as separate branches of government. And so they're bringing this forward on behalf of their courts versus the Reno Justice Courts, which led the way. So send your court administrators here if you have any questions for her on the particular item. But the nuance of coming administratively as separate is this is typically what we do. We'll have the courts follow in succession with one another. Sometimes we'll bundle them, but this was an item that came out of the courts themselves. So this is for Sparks, Wadworth, and Incline.
Very well. It almost looks like to me that it was missed the first time, and somebody decided that they wanted, wanted to be involved in this extra pay as well. So just, that was my question.
Okay. Commissioner Clark, do you want to make a motion on that item?
Well. No.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion on 8D1?
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve a payment of $752.56 per day, retroactive to July 1, 2023, to Sparks, Wadworth, and Incline Justice Court judges who preside over pre-trial detention hearings on Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, and to authorize budget, comptroller, and human resources to make the necessary amendments.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola, looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Any question on the motion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay.
Commissioner Herman?
And that motion passes 4 to 1. All right, we are going to move on to our block. Madam Vice Chair, do you have a block for us today?
It looks like some hunters of grants are doing a good job. That would be block vote of number 9, 10, 11, and 12.
Thank you very much. I am looking for a second on the block vote.
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on the block?
We do. We have Penny Brock speaking on 9, 11, and 12.
Okay.
Penny Brock, for the record. As a resident of Washoe County, I object to these block votes because we, the taxpayers, have comments we want to make. As you see, I have comments on 9, 11, and 12 with 2.44 minutes left. I object to these block votes. So getting to number 9. I don't understand this. I know it's for Lemon Valley. I know they've had problems out there. So I see this is phase 1. We don't know how many properties are involved. Who will own the property? I guess the county, I don't know. But who's going to own the property? It says it's to prevent future development. My question is, is this plan to use for shelters for the homeless or affordable housing? We heard yesterday that Washoe County is about out of land within Sparks and Reno. So where, it looks like they'll have to use this idea. So was this the plan to get land for affordable housing, more shelters? I don't know. On number 11, it's, here we go again. The fiscal year 2324 budget is for over $1 billion. And yet, that wasn't enough. Here they are saying they want to increase 93 million year-to-date and 14 million year-over-year. I don't understand all these increases when we've got a 1 over 1.1 or whatever it is, billion-dollar budget. I don't get it. I worked for a defense contractor, which was funded by the federal government. Ultimately, that's what a defense contractor does. So when it was coming time for the budget, my boss would go around to all of us within the department and say, "Okay, everybody, think of ways we can ask for more money." That's, I, that's what the government does, is that different departments are told, "Figure out how we can ask for more money because the county commission is going to be approving the next year's budget." I can hardly wait till sometime, I don't know. I guess it'll, it may not be next week because two of our commissioners won't be here. So possibly, the meeting number four, the budget, will be before us, and we'll see how much it's been raised from the proposed budget. Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And with a motion from the Vice Chair of Block 9, 10, 11, and 12, and a second from Commissioner Andriola. Any questions on the motion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We are now going to move to item 13. Mr. Manager?
Item 13 is a declaration of the canvas of the vote and order for the Palomino Valley General Improvement District recall election of trustee Thomas Baker, as required by NRS 293.387. Canvas means a review of the election results by the Board of County Commissioners, by which any errors with the election results are officially noted and the official election results are declared. The canvass shall separately note any clerical errors discovered and take account for the changes resulting from the errors discovered. And the results declared must represent the true vote cast. As soon as the board declares the results, the registrar voters shall certify the abstract of the results, which must contain the number of votes cast for the recall and against the recall, and enter it into the record of the board. The board shall order the registrar voters to transmit a copy of the certified abstract, as well as a mechanized report of the abstract in accordance with regulations adopted by the Secretary of State to the Secretary of State within the time required by NRS 293.387. And with us this morning, Madam Chair and board members, we have one of our newest members of the registrar voter's office. This is Andrew McDonald, who has just joined our organization. Welcome, Andrew.
Welcome.
Hello, Madam Chair and County Board Commissioners. I'm Andrew McDonald, Deputy Registrar Voter for Washoe County, standing in for interim registrar voters Carrie Anne Burgess. I'm here to canvass the vote for the results of the Palomino Valley General Improvement District recall special election for Thomas Baker. We had in-person early voting at Spanish Springs Library for one day on May 2, and again on Election Day, May 4, at Spanish Springs Library. There were 1,288 active registered voters in Palomino Valley General Improvement District who were given the opportunity to vote in this election by mail or in person. We received 343 ballots cast, representing 27% of the active registered voters in the election. Of those, 234 mail ballots were cast, representing 18% of the total ballots cast. 50 in-person early voting ballots cast, representing 4% of the total ballots cast. And 59 in-person Election Day ballots cast, representing 5% of the total ballots cast. There were 233 for recall and 107 against recall, including three undervotes. Undervotes mean a ballot that has been cast by a voter, but does, but shows no legal valid selection for any candidate for a particular office or for a ballot question. Lastly, there were no clerical errors discovered, and the results presented represent the true votes cast. That concludes my presentation today, but I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you very much, and welcome to Washoe County. We're excited to have you here. I'm looking to the board, and I see Commissioner Clark has signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know you're new to the position, but it seems like this is one of the rare recall situations that has actually made it all this, this far in the last, how many years? Would you guess? You probably talked about it in the office there.
It's been a few, from what I understand, yes.
20, 30, 40, 50, 100, 200? Any guess?
I don't have a guess, sir, unfortunately.
So it doesn't happen very often?
Correct.
For a number of reasons. Qualifying signatures, voting, just whatever reason. So it's rare that it's happened. And I'd just like to commend the person who put this together, Larry Chesney. He was able to get this done. He has nothing but good things to say about the registrar voter's office. So kudos to you for that and your department. And he thought you were very helpful in making him do everything right by the book and getting this, his goal of his accomplished. So thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Clark.
Any other board members have signed in? Questions, comments? Okay. With that, any public comment, Madam Clerk?
There is none.
Okay. With that, I am looking to, for a motion to approve the canvas of the vote.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. A motion from Vice Chair Herman, looking for a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. A motion and a second. Any questions on the motion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion passes unanimously. First canvas that we've ever passed unanimously. Very interesting.
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate your time.
Very much, great work. All right. Next up, we are going to move into item 14. Madam Clerk? Is this your item, Madam Clerk?
This is.
Okay.
Item 14 will be bill number 1912, and ordinance- an ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 11, alternative sentencing by amending Section 11.090, governing fees for the cost of supervision by authorizing the adoption of a fee schedule for supervision to be made by resolution and all matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto.
Thank you very much. I am looking to the board to see if folks need a presentation on this item. I'm not seeing any. I did touch base with the Department of Alternative Sentencing, and they are still keeping through this fee schedule the portion of the ordinance that allows for the chief to, I want to look at the language just to make sure, that if there was an economic hardship to the probationary, probationer, the chief may waive the imposition or reduce the amount of the fee. And some of these fees have actually been reduced, but because of costs, some of them have been, some of them have increased as well. So any other board comments or questions on this item? I am then looking for a motion for the first reading, and the bill number again is 1912. Commissioner Andriola?
I'll move to approve as presented Bill Number 1912.
Okay, thank you very much. And I didn't see any public comment, Madam Clerk? There wasn't any? Okay, thank you. Now we will move into item 15. This is a lot on our clerk. Back to you, Madam Clerk.
Item 15, if introduced, will be Bill Number 1913, an ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 15, County Finances Purchasing, by modifying and updating language for audits in the Audit Committee. These updates include clarifying functions and authority for independent external auditors, changing the appropriation of monies from the county manager to the comptroller for audits by independent external auditors, updating requirements for audit committee membership, clarifying that the county manager sits as a non-voting member, adding quorum requirements and reasons for committee members' removal from the audit committee, combining and modifying sections about the Audit Committee's code of ethics and charter, removing language governing consent and approval from elected officials for audits into the official statutory duties and responsibilities because the provisions conflict with the Board of County Commissioners' authority to order an audit of an elected official's department. Modifying language related to audit schedule, modifying language related to special audits, modifying language related to an auditor's access to records, modifying language related to the written response to an audit, and changing audit retention from three years instead of permanent retention and all matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I think DA Edwards had some pieces he wanted to add to this.
I do. On section, proposed Section 15.540, subsection 5, which is removal, Ms. Canderas and I were reviewing this last night, and we got into a discussion about the wisdom of this provision, and we think subsection 5 should be taken out so that removal is simply, or that they serve simply at the pleasure of the Board of County Commissioners. And that would be striking subsection 5 and then adding "at the pleasure" of to subsection 2. So that's one. The other was what we identified as a potential concern over the independence of separately elected offices. So the provision in 15.550 at the last sentence says that audits that infringe on the statutory duties and responsibilities of elected officials shall not be conducted without the consent and approval of the elected official. That's proposed to be stricken. And then there are similar provisions in 560 and 568 that address that same type of issue. We're suggesting that those all remain in, so that there's a balance of authority between the county commission and the other elected offices. In other words, it doesn't put the county commission in a superior position with respect to other elected offices so that if they identify a scenario where an audit would infringe on their ability to carry out their duties statutorily, then they don't have to consent to that. So we're suggesting that that remain in instead of being removed. Those are the changes. So one is for cause being changed to "at the pleasure" of the board, and two is keeping the provisions in that maintain that sort of equality of power between the different elected offices.
But yet, they still must comply to the audit as outlined in 15.566.
Yes, and those sections are essentially exceptions to that. The general rule is that, you know, the departments comply with the audits and those type of things. This would be an exception where it's over and above and creates a conflict with their statutory duties.
Great. And we had heard a public commenter having concerns about the three-year keeping of records by the auditors, and I was wondering, is that a state law change? Or I know that there is record retention that's required in state law.
Yes, and I don't know the answer specifically to that question off the top of my head without digging into it.
We have our staff here, and I think that they could.
Those are typically based on retention schedules that the state library and public archives create.
So we're not doing anything out of state law, but just to make sure. Well, okay.
Caitlin Tidessy, Internal Audit Manager. Yes, so you are correct. They are part of the Nevada State Library and Archives, and that's where that three years came from. So that's talking about our work papers. And, but our audit reports are maintained in perpetuity through the clerk's office because they're submitted to the BCC, which goes with the clerk.
Great, thank you. And it seems, I see Vice Chair Herman has signed in.
So with all those changes, will this be brought back to us in its correct form then?
With the second reading. If it's read into the record today with the first reading, yes, Vice Chair.
I'd really rather see it come the other way, come as a first reading again.
And DA Edwards, your thoughts on that?
It can be brought back as either a first or second. So it is appropriate for it to come back as a second. And then at that time, that's the hearing. If anybody has objections, they can state their objections. They can argue against it, whatever it is they want to do. But it can come back that way.
Okay, is there a particular rush with this, or?
We were hoping to have it done before our next Audit Committee meeting on June 13.
Got it, got it. Okay, any other board questions? I'm not seeing any, and it looks like we have public comment.
We do. Penny Brock.
Penny Brock, for the record, I come to you as a taxpayer. Because this deals with the county finances or the taxpayer money, I really think that this should come back as a first reading again. There's been so many changes that the commissioners should, I would think you would want to see all these changes that have been proposed in writing again for a first reading. My concern also is changing the retention for three years instead of, to three years instead of permanent retention. I'm still not quite sure what that means. So I would like to see that clarified in writing through a first reading. Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And what was the bill number again? I'm sorry.
That, if introduced, it will be Bill Number 1913.
Okay. I'm looking to see if the board would like to introduce Commissioner Garcia.
Madam Chair, I'd like to introduce the first reading of Bill Number 1938.
1913.
Oh, my apologies. 1913, as outlined in the staff report.
Thank you very much, and we'll come back with the changes on the second reading, which is pretty typical of how we do things around here. So thank you. All right, we are now moving into our public hearings. We'll move into item 16, and I am going to throw it back to the clerk.
This item is a little unique as it has two first readings.
Okay.
So the first one will be Bill Number 1914, and ordinance amending ordinance number 1,000 in order to change the boundaries of District Number 24, groundwater remediation, and providing other matters relating thereto.
Thank you. And so you want us to do those separately, correct?
They have two different bill numbers, so they'll have to both be introduced.
Separately?
Separately.
Okay, so we'll start with the first one. And any board questions on this ordinance? Do this every year, but I'm not seeing anyone signed in from the board. Is there any public comment, Madam Clerk?
There is none on either one.
Okay. So I am looking to see if a board member wants to read the first first reading, 1914, into the record.
Madam Chair, I'll move to introduce on the first reading, Number 1914 as presented.
Thank you very much. And Madam Clerk, are we going to the second first reading now?
Okay. This will be number, Bill Number 1915, an ordinance imposing a fee on the parcels of land in Washoe County, Nevada, District 24, groundwater remediation to pay the cost of developing and carrying out a plan for remediation and prescribing other matters relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Is there any public comment on that?
There's none.
Okay. I'm looking for someone to help me read in 1915 into the record.
Madam Chair, I move to introduce Bill Number 1915 as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Okay, we'll now move on to item 17, Madam Clerk.
Item 17. This is ordinance number 1718, an ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 110, Development Code, Article 222, Toreki Canyon area, to add a new section for the Setcliff Community Area modifiers, which designates parcels subject to the modifier, specifies exceptions to the development standards for the neighborhood commercial regulatory zone for the Setcliff Community Area, provides for additional residential uses which shall be allowed by right in the Setcliff Community Area, and provides for additional commercial uses which shall be allowed with special use permit in the Setcliff Community Area, and all matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto, formerly Bill Number 1910.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We saw this in April, but if a board member needs a presentation or a refresher, I'm looking to see. I'm not seeing that anyone does. Is there any public comment on this item, Madam Clerk?
There is none.
Okay, thank you. Then with that, if there's no questions from the board, I am looking for someone to move to adopt the ordinance.
Madam Chair, I'll move to adopt Bill Number 1718 as presented.
Thank you. Commissioner Andriola, looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Any questions on that motion?
Just a matter of correction. That was ordinance number 1718, not Bill Number 1718.
Oh, ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with a motion by Commissioner Andriola and a second by Commissioner Garcia, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. We will now move on to item 18. Back to you, Madam Clerk.
This will be ordinance number 1719, I'm sorry, an ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 110, Development Code, in Article 216, Spanish Springs area, to add the Village Green Community Area modifiers to include provisions related to applicability, exceptions, setbacks, building height, truck delivery areas, utilities, architecture, lighting, exterior sign lighting, parking lot lighting, landscape, calle de la Plata, and pyramid way, streetscapes, buffer yards, transportation improvements, and public trail easements, and all other matters relating, all other matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto, formerly Bill Number 1909.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is none.
Does the board wish to see a staff presentation? We already just started second reading. Okay, I'm not seeing any. With that, I am looking for a motion for the ordinance.
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve ordinance Number 1917 as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. Any questions on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. We are now moving on to item 19, Madam Clerk.
This will be ordinance Number 1720, an ordinance revising the Washoe County requirements and schedule of rates and charges for reclaimed water service within the Washoe County by removing rates and charges for reclaimed water irrigation service, charges for bulk reclaimed water service subdivision construction, water rights fee, connection privilege fee for new connections and associated deposits. This ordinance amends ordinance Number 1513 and was formerly Bill Number 1908.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Does the board wish to see a presentation on the second reading? I'm not seeing that anyone does. Was there any public comment on this item?
There's none.
Okay, I am looking for a motion to adopt ordinance 1720.
Madam Chair, I move to accept ordinance Number 1720 as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia, looking for a second. Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Any questions on that motion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We will now move on to item 20, the last public hearing, Madam Clerk.
Item 20. This will be ordinance Number 1721, an ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 65, Safety and Disaster Services, by repealing the definition of division, by repealing sections related to the county risk manager and transferring the former risk manager's duties to the Risk Management Division of the Comptroller's Department, by amending provisions to expand Risk Management Division's authority to settle claims related to damage and repair of county property with no related third-party claims from $1,000 to $2,500. Expand the Risk Management Division's authority to settle any claim or suit for damages from amounts less than $10,000 to amounts up to $25,000. Expand the county manager's authority to settle any claim or suit for damages from the amounts between $10,000 but less than $25,000 to amounts greater than $25,000 but no more than $150,000. Expand the Board of County Commissioners' sole authority to settle any claim or suit for damages from $25,000 or greater to $150,000 or greater, and by revising provisions related to the county safety program, the county safety officer posting of safety notices, reporting requirements for occupationally-related injury or illness, reporting requirements in the event of a fatality or catastrophic event, reporting requirements by officers, employees, volunteers, and department heads following an accident, incident, or injury. Written documentation of accidents and incidents, investigation and evaluation of accidents and incidents involving county officers, employees, or volunteers at the safety committee's review of such investigation, and by amending provisions related to the safety committee's powers and duties, membership, terms of office, and meeting schedule, and all matters necessarily connected thereto. And this was formerly Bill Number 1911.
I'm sorry, what was the ordinance number?
Ordinance Number...
1721.
1721.
1721, thank you. Okay. Does the board wish to see a staff presentation on this second reading? I'm not seeing anyone does. It looks like we have public comment, Madam Clerk?
We do. Penny Brock.
Penny Brock, for the record. I made a comment on the first reading, and I'd just like it to go on the record again for the second reading. My concern about this revision is it expands the county manager's authority to settle up to $150,000. It expands its power with no accountability. It looks like at least one county commissioner should be in on that when he has the authority to settle, because that means negotiation, and it deals with the taxpayer money. I'm confused by the next sentence that says, "Expand the Board of County Commissioners' sole authority to settle claims from $25,000 to $150,000 or greater." to settle claims from twenty-five thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand or greater." Now, is the county commissioner to pass off to you if it's a suit for twenty-five thousand to a hundred and fifty? Or will he keep, keep that buried in his office? How is he gonna, how is it going to be handed off to the county commissioners? I see this as conflicting language, and I think that needs to be cleared up before this is voted on for the second reading. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any other board comments? If there is none, I am looking for a motion on ordinance seventeen twenty-one.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Looking for a second? Thank you, Commissioner Andreola. Any questions on the motion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes three to two with Vice Chair Herman and Commissioner Clark in the negative. Okay, we are now going to move to item twenty-one. Public comment, Mr. Manager.
Item twenty-one is public comment, comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
Penny Brock.
Penny Brock, for the record, here again as a taxpayer. I attended the homeless meeting yesterday. Why are we in the situation we're in? Because we have an increasing homeless problem? Well, the chair of that committee, Commissioner Hill, said that Washoe is the only county in Nevada that has the Built for Zero program. What is that? That means there should be, this, this has to do with affordability and with every, every person should be provided a place to live. You know, that's what's called Marxism. Government wanting to take care of everybody. Then we learned from this consultant that's been hired, I don't recall that that came before the county commissioner, to be approved, the CSH. I looked that organization up. It's out of New York's. It's, and it's run by Alita's. She proposed that you bring for the taxpayer a bond issue for three hundred million dollars for affordable housing, for like six hundred and some affordable housing. And then we, the taxpayer, are to pay fifty thousand dollars a year to maintain that affordable housing. And so the chairman said that she has to continue on because this will be coming, I will hope, before the county commission. Are you going to put that on us? This morning, the financial networks reported inflation is up again. They talked about we, the people, are maxed out. Credit cards are maxed out. People are starting to borrow against their homes, their home equity line. People are getting laid off. I heard last week that forty-three percent of small businesses are not going to be able to meet, meet their rate payment, their rent payments this month. And yet I come to these county commission meetings, and you continue to spend money. The COVID money is gone. How are you going to fund all these programs that you use the COVID money for? We came before you time and time again, Commissioner Clark and Commissioner Herman, ask that. When the COVID money's gone, what are we going to do with all this, these programs we financed? Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move into item twenty-two. Mr. Manager.
Item twenty-two is commissioners and county managers announcements or reports and updates to include boards and commissions, updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Manager Brown, do you have anything for us?
Madam Chair, I would just remind the board, there are going to be two, a couple of commissioners who will be in Miami. I'll be joining them. And, but we still need to conduct a meeting on Tuesday to make sure that there is action taken on the budget before the deadlines occur. So we have made, we will make arrangements for virtual participation.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm now looking to the rest of the board to see if there's any commissioner comments. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had, I was talking earlier, and Manager Brown and the chair heard something that I didn't hear, and I heard a different number yesterday. At the yesterday's meeting, I heard the number three hundred million dollars. Not only did I hear it, but I'll, our town Reno reporter said the number three hundred million dollars was talked about for overall northern Nevada spending over the past five years to tackle homelessness. And they, they needed money for effective, for the effective future. A permanent supportive housing and presentation by a nonprofit called the Corporation for, God, it's the smallest type in the world. I can't get it blown up here, supportive housing. So I heard, and the reporter also heard, three hundred million dollars over the last four or five years on, on the homeless situation here. And then there was an additional comment about the supportive housing for another three hundred million. So now we're looking at possibly six million, but there's other ways to go about this. I'd like to know, and now I'd like this to comment to go to Manager Brown, and he said he would have audits available to, to look at. So I'd like to know since the, the time that the Washoe County took over the CARES campus, how much, since two thousand, two thousand twenty-one, I guess is when it was, I'd like to know the total cost of money to the county, how much funds the county put into this. I'd like to know the total amount of state funds that were allocated to the CARES campus. I'd like to know the total number of federal funds that were allocated to the CARES campus. I'd like to know the total number of construction contracts and the total dollar amount of those. I'd like to know the total number of payroll to the staff and to volunteers of America and, and whoever, whoever else is, is, is working on the CARES campus. I'd like to know contracts for all the goods and services that were delivered to the CARES campus. I'd like to know about all the grants, the total amount of the grants. I'd like to know the total amount of donations. I'd like to know the total amount of cost of foods. This is the, the foods that Catholic Charities has donated. I like to get the cost of in-kind donations and all the costs of anything and everything that had to do with the CARES campus, any medical charges, any cost for first responders, any cost for ambulance service through, the ambulance company, I can't remember the name right now, medical services of any kind, any type of transportation, any type of purchase by the county for anything from paper clips to, to Band-Aids, and any money that the county was reimbursed from guests, from their social security or their insurance or, or anything that the county was able to receive back from, from the folks that, that live there. And any reimbursement of, for billings to, to anybody that the counties billed. So that's my request. I'd like to see what the, I'm tired of playing cat and mouse with this total number. The public doesn't know. I don't know. I don't know who knows. But I'm asking on the record for this, and I may ask for other things in addition to this. So let's get the grand total of everything. And last, certainly not last, but fair market value of the lease that we leased out three acres for sixty years at a dollar a year. What would be the fair market value of that over the next sixty years? Let's factor in what that cost is. And let's factor in the cost of the land the CARES campus is on. And let's also factor in the loss of real estate taxes if that were in the private sector. So I, I think that's a good starting point to get an idea of what the real cost of the CARES campus is. Also, and one last thing, it just keeps coming up, it's like popcorn just popping up. How much property taxes were devalued surrounding the CARES campus? The assessor had to reduce property value. So let's get a total cost of this and find out what, what it's really costing. And I don't care if I'm guessing right or wrong, I just, let's see the numbers. Let's quit playing guessing game here, and let's see since the inception of the CARES campus what the total cost is. Thank you.
Vice Chair Herman.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. I was honored to be, to have been able to be at the Governor's Prayer Breakfast early in the month. And I, I know this county and our state and the people within. Need prayer. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have comments? Not seeing any. Well, thank you all for a wonderful meeting. Have a great rest of your day.